That's what I was waiting for. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Petaluma City Council and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, May 12, 2025. If you wish to provide a public comment on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker card in the back, they're in the back of the chamber, and bring it to our clerk who is in the front of the chamber. I'd like to now invite Monica Aparicio and Maria Galvez to provide information to those who wish to participate in Spanish tonight.
Thank you and good evening. Buenas noches. Hola, me llamo Maria Galvez y estoy aquí con mi pareja de interpretación, Monica Aparicio. Estamos hoy aquí como intérpretes. Hoy este evento se llevará a cabo en español e inglés. Se usarán ambos idiomas activamente, así que usted podrá elegir un canal para participar en su idioma preferido después de que le hayamos explicado cómo funcionará la interpretación. Estaremos usando la función de interpretación de Zoom. Después de que termine esta explicación, se activará la función de interpretación. Si usted está conectado con su computadora, usted verá un icono de un mundo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si está conectado con su tableta o teléfono, pulse en más y verá un menú que incluye la opción de interpretación de idiomas. Para escuchar la interpretación, pulse el icono del mundo o interpretación de idiomas. A continuación, elija su canal de idiomas. Gracias. Thank you, we are ready.
And thank you. I'd like to start the evening with our roll call, please.
President.
Kater Thompson. DeCarly. Now.
Here.
Quint.
Here.
Shribbs.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Wonderful, and I believe our council member, Kater Thompson, will be joining us shortly. Please let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as is our way, we'll look up and down the dais and see if there's any agenda changes to make tonight, which I suspect, given the agenda, there isn't. And there isn't, so we will proceed as the agenda is printed and distributed to folks. Tonight, the focus is the workshop on the city's budget. Before we open it up, I'd like to offer a little bit of forward information. We will break the presentation tonight into several sections. I wanted to call them bite-sized, but budget this size is never bite-sized. But there will be probably three separate opportunities after we cover material for the public to weigh in, public comment to be in three different tranches. And with that, I'd like to introduce our city manager to help us understand this big document we have in front of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and Petaluma community. My team and I are honored to present the fiscal year 2526 budget, which reflects an exciting year ahead, a time of progress, strategic investments and initiatives, and thoughtful resource management to benefit our entire community. Our budget reflects incredibly thoughtful planning and monitoring and adjusting for trends, and because of that, our economics, because of that and our economics in Petaluma, we are in a good position, and despite many jurisdictions facing significant budget cuts. Proud to deliver a balanced budget with continued strong investments in our community priorities, including our infrastructure, public safety, homelessness prevention, emergency preparedness, parks improvements, and continued delivery of excellent resident services. This $348 million budget reflects Petaluma's vision, leadership, and innovation. We're proud to deliver programs and projects that honor our community's needs and aspirations. This budget's guided by the city council's goals and priorities, ensuring we deliver key council initiatives, refine operations as needed to address those priorities, and be agile enough to pivot and respond to unforeseen challenges, and enhance service delivery to our residents. At its heart, this is a people-powered budget, and it's shaped by high-performing city staff, which if you're not here and you're watching from Zoom, we've got a full, we've got a full chamber of amazing talent, our partnerships with our business community, our school districts, our nonprofit partners, and our regional partners, and most importantly, our Petaluma community. What you'll note in this budget is positive financial trends in property tax growth, and our new Measure H fire funding, strong transit occupancy tax, which is also referred to as TOT, our grant funding success, which we've leveraged our general fund tenfold, and healthy emergency reserves. Trends we are monitoring are flattening sales tax revenues and economic uncertainty at all levels of government. Measure U has been transformative for our city. It's provided us financial stability, expanded our services, which include more police, fire, EMS, parks, public works, code enforcement staff. It's provided our mobile crisis safe team, housing and homelessness program and staff, community engagement, our amazing CIP team that we have here tonight, and enhanced IT capacity and cybersecurity. We also are a city that strives for organizational excellence. We've added management analysts to improve program delivery, grant management, and policy updates. We've made, we've leveraged at least a couple hundred million dollars in grants and partnerships over the last four years for housing, climate action, CIP, park upgrades, emergency operations, and street and active transportation projects. We also have invested $55 million over five years on our roads, with major renovations complete on North McDowell, Maria, and so many more. Having had the benefit of four and a half years of Measure U revenues, we're proud of the transformation of the city and of our city organization. Just a few ways that transformation's evident now and how the infusion of Measure U dollars into the organization has facilitated that transformation, we were able to achieve a balanced budget with no structural deficit. And that is so significant because just five and a half years ago, we were facing a $30 million deficit in 2021, or $6.5 million in 2021, and then for five years, a $30 million deficit. We've added staff and augmented services in all departments in the city, more park maintenance workers, more police officers, more fire EMS paramedic staff, more code enforcement officers, more public work staff. We've added new staffing and programs in areas we would have never been able to fund before Measure U, a full-time emergency services manager, the Safe Team Mobile Crisis Intervention Program, a dedicated climate action and fleet program staff, dedicated housing and homelessness program staff, dedicated capital improvement and multimodal transportation mobility project managers, professional IT staff to implement new software and online services. We've added, as I mentioned, the management analysts in nearly all the departments. They're critical to being a 21st century city because they directly manage programs, analyze financial and operational data, apply for, track and manage grants, write our policies, draft clear and helpful staff reports, and ensure external communications to the community and research and help apply best industry practices. We also issued a $20 million bond in 2021 to jumpstart multiple major road improvements, and we have active planning and design underway for a new combined police-fire-public-safety facility at the fairgrounds, the first of its kind in the city in decades. We're proud of what the city has accomplished over the last five years. We're proud to be considered a leader in the county and the region on many fronts. Measure U was the critical locally-controlled revenue source that we needed to fundamentally change the trajectory of our city and set us up for long-term future success. However, as we said both before and after Measure U was approved, it is not the end-all-be-all panacea to all that ails our city organization. We need to continue to prioritize economic development, revenue generation, affordable housing for all, and the efficiency and innovation to continue our progress toward the great city our residents deserve and we want to become. So, to close, I just want to give a heartfelt thanks to the dedicated finance department who's in the midst of a major ERP implementation, and that is the financial and HR software that, that, that we rely on every day. And I just want to thank our finance director, Jesse Gooch, Corey Garberolio, Isabel Kraft, Janine Tedrow, and the entire team. And deep appreciation to all the city departments and our mayor and city council for their leadership and stewardship of the city's most important policy document. Together, we're going to continue to lead locally, regionally, and nationally, ensuring a vibrant, resilient, and inclusive Petaluma for generations to come, and look forward to reviewing this budget with you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know you're jumping to get into, I just want to advise the council with all the heavy content we're seeing, we are going to hold our questions and not interrupt the presentation. And if you see something you need to refresh to on the screen and the number of the slide is there, that's the great way to bring us right back to that in a question period. Or if you don't see the slide covered or something, then just pop up and say, what slide is that? And that way, we'll know to get back to it efficiently. Claire, thank you, and back to you.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. And the remote works. It's a big, big step forward for us. So just a quick look at tonight's agenda. I'm going to be speaking briefly on our budget process. Then we're going to look at our all funds budget overview, so that's the total funds, revenues, and expenditures. We're also going to take a closer look at a few of our internal service funds, our enterprise funds, as well as a few CDD funds. And then we'll be turning it over to CIP for them to go over their program. After that, we'll go into our general fund overview and our forecast update. Then we'll talk about some of the major initiatives that we have going on in the city, and then we'll wrap it up with Q and A. I believe we will be pausing after the CIP section for questions, comments. So let's dive in. So our budget development, as you know, it takes us about nine months from beginning to end to birth a budget. We kick off in October of every year, starting with our CIP planning. We then move into the general fund forecast and goals in the beginning of the calendar year. After that, we work with departments to put together their budgets and evaluate their requests. Then we draft the document, so you received your draft document last week, and now today we're having our budget workshop. And then we'll be back on June 2 for budget adoption. The new fiscal year kicks off July 1, and we then, once the new fiscal year begins, we use that time to evaluate and monitor our actuels as we move forward to make sure that the budget lines up with everything we're doing. Here's just a quick refresher of our city structure that's behind everything that we build, and so we have our three offices that report directly to city council, and that's the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city manager, and then nine other departments that report to the city manager's office. So in all, we have 12 departments and over 400 city employees. So looking at what's new for this fiscal year, primarily it's staffing, but number one, we're looking to focus on economic development, and so part of that is looking at potentially reformulating economic development and open government, and also looking at how they can better partner with community development and the city manager's office to be even more effective. And then we have some staffing changes. So in the city attorney's office, we're adding a half an FTE to bring us up to three assistant city attorneys. In public works, we're adding three new positions to support our city engineering division, our safe streets and mobility division, and our CIP. We're adding one position to facilities to support our facility team needs and all of our deferred maintenance on our city facilities. And then finally, we're adding two positions to water resources and utilities, and those will support environmental services and our water operations. So these are some of the guidelines that we have to follow when we're putting together the budget each year. And the biggest thing that we have to do with the budget is identify what resources we have available and then figure out how we can best use those to meet our many needs. So as you've heard, especially in Assistant City Manager Cochran's presentation last week, we're definitely seeing that there are needs that outstrip our revenues that are coming in, and so we're always looking at how best to, you know, keep our costs down so we can do as much as possible, but we're also seeing that we need to evaluate how we can bring in more revenue to help better address our community needs. For each city fund, we are balanced. We go through and make sure that we are not spending more than we either are bringing in or that we also have in reserve. In terms of the general fund, we did ask departments to reduce their operating budgets where feasible so that we could balance the fund this year. And then all of their requests for additional staffing or dollars for programs were very closely evaluated in terms of the big picture to make sure that we are meeting the council goals and priorities. So here we're, sorry about that. Here we're looking, this is the total of all city funds, our projected revenues for fiscal '26. That total is just over $300 million, and you'll notice that the majority of it comes from the general fund, along with the Measure U and Measure H transaction use taxes, as well as our utility funds and our capital improvement funds. So those three categories make up the bulk of the revenues that are coming in.
Sorry, if we could just remember to slow down and pause for our interpreters.
I appreciate that, Caitlin. I get so excited when I talk about money. All right, so here we're looking at the fiscal '26 revenues again. This is the same total, but now instead of splitting it out by fund, we're looking at it by revenue type, so the types of dollars that are coming in. You'll notice that big chunk right in the bottom left, you know, for transfers in of $85.2 million. I want to remind you that that number is exactly matched in the expenditures budget. You'll also see $85.2 million there. So those aren't new monies coming in, that is the movement of money in between city funds. When we look at the monies that we're actually receiving, our biggest categories are taxes, which includes our property and sales taxes, along with others, and then our dollars coming in from our utilities. So now we've switched to look at our expenditures, and you'll notice that the expenditures amount is $348 million, which is $42 million higher than we saw in our revenues. That's not a mistake, that's not an error. What that means is that we're planning on using $42 million of fund balance or reserves. That's throughout all of the city funds, so it's not just coming out of one particular fund. Again, for each fund, we've made sure that the revenues coming in, plus the money we have in reserves, equals or exceeds the amount we plan to spend. And you'll notice here that this chart, which is shown by fund, looks very similar to the revenues by fund chart, and that's because generally speaking, you know, if we're bringing in a lot of money, we're also planning on spending that money. And so you can see the general fund, the utility funds, the capital project funds, all are where we're seeing the most spending. And so now here, we've taken that same expenditure amount of $348 million across all city funds, and we've broken it out to look at where those dollars are being spent. And again, now you can see those transfers out of $85.2 million, so again, we've just got money going in and out of different city funds. That is primarily for capital projects, though, also for some other things as well. So our biggest categories, if you can see, are the salaries and benefits and our service contracts. So that's professional services, maintenance services, repairs, all of those different things that we hire outside professionals for. So now we're going to take a look at some individual funds to get a little more detail. Part of why we're doing this is, if you've been here before, you know that often we'll bring up the individual department heads to go through each department. This year, we're attempting to streamline, so we'll instead be looking more at the city as a whole, but we did want to call out these specific funds for just a little closer review. So on this chart, we have the IT division budget. So their budget is $4.7 million for fiscal '26, which is an increase of about $300,000 over the current year. And that's due to increases in their budget for services and supplies and software, coupled with some decreases to their budget as we did some restructuring. You'll notice that their largest categories are help desk and then system maintenance for infrastructure and applications, and this is also where you'll find our GIS expenses. So that's really useful stuff for the whole city right there. Moving on, here's another one of our internal service funds. This is our risk management fund. And so the risk management fund is where we provide claims management for all city claims. This is managed by human resources and close, and they work very closely with city attorney's office. And the big thing I want to call out with this pie chart is you can see the majority of the Pac-Man there is insurance premiums, at 64%. And so really, across California, cities are seeing their insurance premiums rising by a great deal every single year, and that's, you know, partly due to climate change and natural disasters and just all of the different things that have been taxing our cities lately in terms of additional costs. And so we do expect that number to continue to increase every year by probably at least 7% to 10%. Like, this is what we're seeing trend-wise. What happened? I was betrayed by the remote. It's, okay. I don't know what happened, but here we are. So, and then next we're looking, this is another fund managed by the human resources department, and this is our workers' compensation budget. And so you'll see here, the number one expense that we have is our budgeted claims expense. And so that amount is calculated by our actuaries. They put together an annual actuary report that looks at our past trends and estimates how much they think we may have in claims going forward. And so this is our estimated claims amount, which we have to make sure that we finance. And currently, right now, they are showing that there's a, it's forecast that that number will continue to increase and that we do need to look at increasing funding into reserves for this fund as well. Moving over to our enterprise funds, the first one we have here is airport. The majority of the airport fund is capital projects, as you can see. So for all of the enterprise funds, they have both an operating fund and then a capital projects fund. So as you know, the airport accounts for the daily operation and maintenance, and then the proposed budget for fiscal '26 is $5.2 million, which is an increase of, is that $2.3 million? Sorry. Over fiscal '25, and that's all capital projects. Looking over at the Marina Enterprise Fund, this is largely stable compared to prior year. This is, accounts for the daily operation and maintenance of the Marina and the Turning Basin, and so the majority of this budget is, goes to regular operations and salaries and benefits. Next, we have our Transit Enterprise Fund with a proposed budget of $10.3 million. This budget does include purchase of electric buses and some transfers to CIP for transit facility electrification. So that's the big move that they're making. The budget includes to maintain operations and then four electric buses in here, and we're continuing the free transit program in fiscal '26, which is funded by Measure Moving on to the wastewater utility enterprise fund, they have a proposed budget of $57.6 million. About just under half of that goes to their capital improvement projects. Another $21 million goes to the Ellis Creek wastewater treatment operations, and then there is a portion that goes to debt service for bonds that they issued in the past. And again, this wastewater enterprise fund, they are receiving two new positions in this fiscal year, and those positions are going to be split between wastewater, water, and stormwater. So they're receiving one lead environmental compliance officer, as well as a senior management analyst to support the new department. And then our last enterprise fund, right? Okay, making sure I'm not speaking too soon. Here's the Water Utility Enterprise Fund, and so if you look here, the majority of their budget is water operations at 79% of their budget, and then they have $5 million of budgeted capital improvement projects for the upcoming fiscal year. And again, they will also share the cost of the lead environmental compliance officer and the senior management analyst for this department. Moving over to community development, this is our planning budget proposed for fiscal '26. It's a total budget of just over $2 million, which is an increase of about $260,000 over fiscal '25. That's mainly coming from increased salaries and benefits, just the regular cost of having our positions. Now, I want to point out here that the large, I'm trying to figure out what to call that color, maroon portion, again, the cost recovery contracted services of $895,000, we're splitting that out to show that that full amount is anticipated to be cost recovered. So that means that these are contracted services that are fully paid by developer fees. The rest of the budget is paid for with city funds, but not that portion, so. Here we have the building budget, which is primarily building services with a smaller percentage going to administration. They've got a total proposed budget of $3 million for fiscal '26, which is actually a slight decrease from the current fiscal year, based on some position realignments within the department. And then our final fund that we're going to look at is the housing. This is a combination of all of our housing funds, not just one fund. Overall, the proposed budget is $2.8 million. That's about 50% housing and roof fees. Then we also have our successor agency housing, we have a portion for mobile home rent stabilization, and our CDBG dollars. So this is everything that we have budgeted for housing, looking forward to fiscal '26. And then that will take us into our capital improvement program.
Thank you, Jesse, Mayor, council members, members of the public, and city staff. My name is Jonathan Songlera, and I'm the Engineering and Capital Improvement Program Manager, and I'm excited to take you through our proposed budget this year. For the sake of time, please hold your questions until the very end of the presentation. The Capital Improvement Program, abbreviated CIP, represents a full catalog of our communities' facilities and infrastructure needs. CIP projects are long-term, significant investments in essential infrastructure and facilities within our city, and CIP projects are distinct from routine-type maintenance. Guided by a five-year strategic plan, the CIP program is regularly revisited to ensure its alignment with the evolving community needs and priorities. Each fiscal year, a specific budget is determined, approved by council, and allocated to execute CIP projects for that specific year. The goal of the CIP is to maintain and improve infrastructure and facilities with a primary focus on ensuring the safety and improving the quality of life for our community. As you all know, Petaluma is a full-service city. As part of the comprehensive city services, our Capital Improvement Program includes a diverse array of projects vital to our community's well-being. These projects touch every aspect of life, from enhancing our public parks, maintaining and creating resiliency in our wastewater utility system, implementing energy conservation upgrades, improving the safety of our streets, and much more.
Oh, did I lose the presentation up there?
The internet just went down, so we've got our IT staff here, so.
Thank you. Before we can get into the budget details, we wanted to take a moment to recognize some of the important progress we've made on CIP projects this year. As you know, capital projects move through multiple phases: planning, design, bidding, and construction. The next few slides highlight some of the milestones that we have achieved in fiscal year 2425. These aren't all of our CIP projects, but just a snapshot of our recent achievements. We'll start here with a few standout projects that we've completed this year, and these projects were powered in large part by Measure U funding. Measure U has been instrumental in making these types of projects possible, and you'll see more examples of Measure U impact throughout today's presentation. Projects supported by this local funding are marked by a Projects supported by this local funding are marked by a Powered by Measure U stamp, as you can see on these slide pictures. In the past year, we have successfully completed a complete streets reconstruction of Maria Drive, installed new piles, docks, and gangways at our Turning Basin, and addressed water intrusion issues at our community center. We've also successfully added a new outdoor learning space at Schollenberger Park, improved access and amenities at Latte Sarah, McNear, and McDowell Parks, and completed a seismic assessment of our city facilities to better understand and address structural vulnerabilities. Additionally, we replaced our failing outfall at Ellis Creek Water Recycling Facility, created a monitoring well to support long-term groundwater sustainability on Oak Hill, installed cathodic protection for one of our major water mains that crosses below the Petaluma River, and in addition to our planned improvements, we swiftly completed the emergency sewer main replacement along Jefferson Street. These projects may not always be visible as new streets, parks, or buildings, but they're just as important to our city's health and our residents' daily lives. Concurrently, we have wrapped up the design on several key projects this past fiscal year, and we're gearing up for construction. The PIPs Parallel Force Main Project is ready to move forward, which is a critical project to ensure the continued functionality of our wastewater collection system. We've also successfully coordinated with the State Coastal Conservancy and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to dredge the Petaluma River this summer. At Lucchese Park, we're ready to move forward with the new skate park, which is shaped by strong community input, as well as the turf field replacement to fix drainage and improve playability. Here, we have a few projects that have moved into construction in this past year, and we expect to wrap up this summer, which includes the Swim Center pool replastering, which is the first phase of the Swim Center improvements, the recent replacement of water meters citywide to advanced metering infrastructure, or AMI, and Phase Two of the sewer main replacements along Payron Madison. We have also moved some other projects into construction this past year, including upgrades to the chemical systems at Ellis Creek Water Recycling Facility, digester number-two repairs at Ellis Creek, and Phase One of the agricultural recycled water expansion along Adobe Road. This chart shows our capital improvement program spending over the past five fiscal years. As you can see, we have seen consistent growth in the actual CIP expenditures over year, year-over-year, from around thirteen-point-five million in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to an estimated forty-four million this year. A big driver for that growth has been Measure U, as it has allowed us to both expand the type of projects we can deliver, as well as the staff needed to get them done. Fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was the first year we formally prioritized our CIP to help focus staff resources and to improve our delivery. That approach, combined with added staffing, has helped us nearly double our annual project spending in just two years. Our recent CIP spending reflects not only an increase in project delivery, but also our improved ability to plan, prioritize, and execute across all divisions. Please note that the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five numbers are still estimates, as this fiscal year is still ongoing. Now, we're going to review the proposed budget for the capital improvement program, starting with an overview of the five-year catalog, which goes through fiscal year twenty-nine, thirty. This chart shows a budget breakdown of the expected capital improvement projects by division, which highlights the diversity of Petaluma's infrastructure needs. While the numbers on this slide are shown in millions, the numbers shown on future charts and tables are shown in thousands, which is typical of budgetary documents. You will also notice that a combination of public works, facilities, and wastewater projects on this chart makes up roughly seventy-three percent of the total funding uses. Also, all of our paving projects and street projects are located within the public works section of this chart, which partly accounts for its high-budget amount. Here, we're looking at the projected funding sources for this, for the city's capital improvement program over the next five years. This graph represents a summary of various funding sources that support our capital projects. The city currently manages, manages over a hundred unique funds, many of which contribute to the CIP budget. Funding is drawn from a wide variety of sources, including utility enterprise funds, development impact fees, local sales tax measures, state and federal grants, and other special revenue funds. It is important to note that each funding sources come with its own set of rules and limitations. Not every fund can be used for every type of project. This is a key factor in how we prioritize and plan our capital investments. Wastewater and water utility funds account for a large portion of our planned investment, and when combined, they account for around twenty-four percent, which reflects the scale and cost of the ongoing infrastructure needs in those systems. Impact fees, including traffic, park, facilities, and storm drain impact fees, make up roughly eleven percent of the projected funding, supporting projects tied to new developments. Grants contribute about six percent of our funding, and we continue to pursue every opportunity to leverage outside dollars to help support our project budget and reduce our reliance on local funding. In addition, future bonds are currently projected to cover twenty-nine percent of our five-year total budget, highlighting the scale of investment needed and the importance of long-term financing tools. Currently, approximately twenty-one percent of the funding in-out years remains undetermined or unfunded, highlighting the need for ongoing financial planning and coordination. We are also incredibly grateful for the community for supporting key measures over the years, including Measure U, Measure H, and Measure M, all of which continue to play a vital role in moving projects forward. This diverse funding picture underscores the importance of timing, coordination, and flexibility as we move projects forward through the planning, design, and implementation. Our capital improvement program is a five, full five-year roadmap, but we simply don't have the funding, staffing, or construction capacity to move every project forward at once. That's why, last year, we introduced a more structured and optimized model, which has helped us reset expectations, streamline delivery, and align efforts across teams. Now, each fiscal year, we prioritize projects based on, on factors like public safety, operational need, regulatory requirements, available funding, and community input. Prioritization ensures that we make the most of limited resources and deliver high-impact results. It also helps us balance quick wins with long-term investments and allows us to adjust priorities each year to reflect changing needs, new funding opportunities, or emerging challenges. Another major benefit of this approach is coordination across departments, allowing teams to align project timelines, scopes, and funding strategies. For example, we can better align paving with utility replacements or group similar-type projects to save on costs, also minimizing disruption and making delivery more efficient on these types of projects. Prioritization also helps us compete for and secure outside funding. By having shovel-ready, high-priority projects, we are better positioned to take advantage of grant cycles, as well as match local dollars with state and federal resources. Ultimately, this approach leads to better outcomes and sets more realistic expectations, minimizes delays and cost overruns, and ensures that we stay responsive to changing needs while improving the way we plan, coordinate, and fund our work. The criteria that is taken under consideration when developing a prioritized and focused list of CIP projects for each fiscal year are: safety or criticality, infrastructure condition, permit requirements, regulatory mandates, project status, funding expiration and limits such as grant timelines, as well as available funding sources. Now, we will transition to focusing on capital projects slated for this upcoming fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Here is an overview of the capital improvement project budget by division or category for the upcoming fiscal year. This data represents budgets for projects that have allocated funding in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, all of which are fully funded. The upcoming fiscal year will have significant investments in a diverse array of projects, serving many elements that can contribute to our quality of life here in Petaluma. Now, we will review a more detailed list of the projects planned for this upcoming fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Please keep in mind that these projects represent the prioritized subset of the full five-year capital improvement program. This is not the full catalog, but rather the projects we plan to actively fund and advance in this upcoming fiscal year. We will walk through the projects by division, starting with facilities, which is shown here on this slide. And for each project, we will list the project name, as well as the milestone we aim to complete by the end of the fiscal year, and its approved, or sorry, and its planned budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. For the planned facilities projects in twenty-five, twenty-six, we have a total of eleven projects with a total project budget of fifteen-point-five million. These projects primarily focus on public safety and addressing the critical facility infrastructure needs. This chart shows a breakdown of the funding sources for the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six facility CIP projects. A significant portion of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six facility projects will be funded by a planned bond issuance and facility impact fees. We are also very grateful for the passage of Measure H last spring, the Fire Prevention and Disaster Response County Sales Tax Measure, which will be supporting our efforts with fire, with fire station safety improvements, among other fire-related projects and programming. This year's facility CIP budget includes a large focus on public safety infrastructure. Our city's fire stations and police department facilities are aging and in need of upgrades to address seismic safety, capacity issues due to increased staffing, and ensuring that our first responders continue to be available to serve our community. Some of our key projects will be designing and ultimately constructing the new Petaluma Public Safety Facility, seismic safety and privacy upgrades to Fire Station One to enhance the structural integrity and provide appropriate living corridors for our diverse firefighting team, building upgrades, HVAC replacement, a new roof, and upgrades to accessibility to the Petaluma Regional Library in partnership with the Sonoma County Library, as well as improvements to safety and functionality at the Keller Street Garage, beginning with a comprehensive site assessment. A key project included in this year's CIP is the design of the new Petaluma Public Safety Facility, which will serve as a consolidated home for Fire Station Four, the Police Department Headquarters, and a new emergency operations center. The facility will be located at the Fairgrounds Site, and we're currently in the design phase of the project, working in close coordination with our fire chief, police chief, and operational staff to ensure the building supports both daily operations, as well as long-term public safety goals. From a capital delivery standpoint, this is a complex and multi-component project. In addition to the facility itself, the project includes infrastructure improvements in the surrounding area, such as upgrades to support emergency vehicle access, traffic circulation, and active transportation connections. These improvements are essential, not only for response operations, but also for the overall safety and connectivity of the Fairgrounds area. The project is being funded through a combination of sources, including Measure H, facilities, and traffic impact fees, as well as a planned bond issuance. Once complete, this facility will provide a modern, resilient base of, base for Petaluma's emergency services, improve coordination between fire and police operations, as well as support faster, more reliable emergency response. For the planned public works projects in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we have a total of thirteen projects with a total budget of approximately thirteen-point-three million. These projects include a significant effort to improve the safety and functionality of our city's roads, streets, paths, and sidewalks. This chart shows a breakdown of the funding sources for the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six public works CIP projects. A significant portion of the funding for these projects is supported by traffic mitigation impact fees, as well as Measure U bonds, which were issued to leverage the Measure U sales tax passed in twenty-twenty. We have also had success in applying for and winning grants, which has supplemented a significant portion of our public works project budgets. Thanks to the community's support through Measure U, we've made meaningful progress in improving the condition of our streets. Since Measure U funding began in twenty-twenty-one, we've increased our annual investment in pavement maintenance from around two-point-one million to over seven-point-six million per year, a major shift that's allowed us to both catch up and maintain our roadways citywide. As a result of these efforts, we've seen a steady rise in our pavement condition index, or PCI, which is one key measurement of pavement health. Our three-year rolling average PCI has improved from around forty-five in twenty-twenty-one to fifty-two in twenty-twenty-four. On this graph, the dash-blue line represents the PCI for the year, while the green line represents the three-year rolling average. The rolling averages are particularly important because it takes out the peaks and valleys of the graph, as you will see year-to-year, and you can see a more consistent trend with this data. The level of sustained investment simply wouldn't be possible without Measure U, and we're committed to building on this momentum in the years ahead. Our Safe Streets and Mobility Team have developed a comprehensive five-year paving plan, which was presented to council in November twenty-twenty-four. This plan uses a ranking framework based on pavement condition, traffic volume, safety, and equity to prioritize which streets should be repaired, resurfaced, or preserved each year. For the current fiscal year, the paving plan includes both major pavement and restoration projects like Renear Avenue, Howard Street, Coffield Lane, and D Street, as well as preventative maintenance work such as slurry sealing to preserve our roads that are in better condition at a lower cost. By maintaining roads in good, in a good condition now, we can reduce the need for more costly reconstruction down the road and extend the overall life of our roadway network. This five-year strategy reflects a shift towards a more proactive, transparent, and financially sustainable approach to pavement management, so that we can keep our streets safer and in better shape in the long term. When we take on larger pavement restoration projects, we're not just installing new asphalt. We're also coordinating a wide range of infrastructure improvements. Before paving begins, we assess what other upgrades are needed beneath and around the street. That often includes replacing aging water or sewer mains, expanding recycled water infrastructure, and updating traffic signals and other utilities. At the same time, we look at how the street functions overall and identify opportunities to make streets safer and more accessible to all users, not just vehicles. As we rebuild the roadway, we look for opportunities to add or improve bike lanes, install bulb-outs and curb ramps, as well as enhance crosswalks to make walking and biking safer, safer and more comfortable. We also reconfigure lanes where it makes sense by narrowing or reducing travel lanes to slow speeds, improve safety, and better organize traffic flow. By bundling these improvements into one coordinated project, it becomes more efficient, reduces construction impacts, and delivers a broader value to the community, and in some cases, saves costs. Maria Drive, shown here on this slide, is a recent example of a full restoration project. This project was recently completed, and it included expanded recycled water services, upgrade, upgraded crosswalks and safety medians, new pedestrian bulb-outs to shorten crossing distance, buffered bike lanes, new curb ramps, traffic signal upgrades, and reductions to speed limits in school zones. This slide shows a funding breakdown for the recently completed Maria Drive project and helps to illustrate what we mean by when we say paving restoration projects are more than just paving. In this case, only thirty-nine percent of the project budget went towards paving itself. The rest of the project budget supported key improvements, such as twenty-six percent for bike, pedestrian, accessibility, and safety upgrades, and thirty-five percent for expanding the recycled water system. This is a good example of how we're approaching larger pavement restoration projects in the full five-year paving plan, coordinating with utility upgrades and mobility improvements wherever possible. It also highlights the range of funding sources that we bring together, including pavement funds, utility enterprise funds, and grant or impact fees tied to active transportation. Projects like this require a high level of interdepartmental coordination and careful sequencing, but the payoff is substantial. We're able to maximize resources, minimize disruptions to the community, and deliver long-term value across multiple systems. Alongside our larger capital projects, we've continued advancing lower-cost, high-impact improvements through our Safe Streets Quick Build Program. This program allows us to act quickly on safety needs without waiting on the full capital project timelines. In fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we're focusing on improvements near K-through-12 schools identified through our Safe Routes to School Audit, as well as priority corridors like Eli Boulevard South, which was flagged through our Safe Streets Nomination Program. These efforts, which support our Vision Zero goals, are supported by Measure U and supplemented with grant funding. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, our transit capital projects will continue efforts to maintain and improve essential transit infrastructure. Bus stop improvements are ongoing, with continued investment in shelters, signage, and ADA access, and passenger amenities across the system. We will also begin design work for a roof overlay at the Transit Administration Building to extend the facility's useful life and address maintenance needs. The total fiscal year budget for these projects is around a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars, primarily funded through Transit and Inner City Rail Capital Program, or TERSIP, with additional support from traffic mitigation impact fees and TDA transit capital funding. These targeted investments ensure we continue improving the ridership experience and supporting transit operations while leveraging dedicated transit funding sources. In fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we plan to begin construction on paving projects at the Petaluma Airport, following a project grant award from the Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA. These projects are essential for maintaining safe aircraft movement areas and for supporting long-term airport operations. We are also continuing design work on the safety zone improvements near the drainage channel and beginning design for the fuel facility upgrades. The total fiscal year 2526 budget for airport capital projects is approximately two point eight million, funded through a combination of airport capital funds and anticipated FAA grants. As with many airport capital efforts, we anticipate federal support through FAA grant programs, but actual funding availability is subject to the current federal budget environment. By advancing designs now and keeping these projects shovel-ready, we are ensuring that the city can capitalize on FAA funding when available and avoid delays to these infrastructure needs. This year, we are advancing six parks projects with a combined budget of just over five point three million. The list includes a variety of work, such as field and facility improvements, trail improvements, and early-phase planning for future upgrades. This chart shows a breakdown of the funding sources for the proposed fiscal year 2526 Park CIP projects. A significant portion of the funding for these projects is supported by Parkland impact fees and Go Sonoma Transportation Sales Tax revenue. These projects also support, are also supported by revenue from Measure M, Storm Drain Utility, Traffic Impact Fees, transient occupancy tax, and Measure U. Sonoma County Measure M, Parks for All, is a county-wide eighth-of-ascent sales tax where two-thirds of the revenue goes towards county regional parks, and the remaining one-third is distributed amongst nine cities, uh, which includes Petaluma. Petaluma's revenue this year is anticipated to be around nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, and this table shows the planned expenditures by category of this funding, uh, with fifty-nine percent supporting capital improvement projects and forty-one percent supporting parks, maintenance, services, amenities, enhancements. We have successfully partnered with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the State Coastal Conservancy to dredge the Petaluma River this summer. We will continue moving forward with construction on the new Lucchese Skate Park, a long-requested community project that will provide a modern, inclusive space for skaters of all ages and skill levels. Following completion of the pool replastering project, we will begin Phase Two of the Swim Center Improvement Project, starting with an assessment of the facility's needs. We have also been making incremental improvements to the two-point-five-mile-long Lynch Creek Trail over the past several years. We are currently wrapping up the design on the final elements of this project, which will include paving between Edith and Payran Streets and improved accessibility at the Payran Street Trailhead. We have five recycled water projects planned for fiscal year 2526 with a total project budget of two point seven million. Two major projects are scheduled to complete the, uh, construction this year. One is the tertiary filtration system expansion at Ellis Creek, and the other is Phase One of the agricultural recycle water expansion along Adobe Road. Design work will continue for Phase Two of Adobe Road, uh, as well as urban recycle water expansion along St. Francis Drive. We also continue, we will also continue construction on the Renear Avenue Recycle Water Extension, which will help our recycle water system, uh, get to areas where there's growing urban demand. These recycle water projects will be largely funded through wastewater capital and supplemented with federal grant funds through a partnership with the North Bay Water Reuse Authority. In fiscal year 2526, we plan to complete our tertiary filtration system expansion to help meet our growing recycle water demand, and we will wrap up Phase One of Adobe Road Recycle Water Pipeline, which will bring, uh, recycle water to our agricultural customers. Phase Two of this project will follow, completing the loop and expanding our services even further. In addition, we also have four planned surface water projects in fiscal year 2526 with project budgets totaling two point five million. These projects include upgrades and enhancements to better protect our community by helping to improve stormwater flow and mitigate flood funding, or flooding to, um, to ensure Petaluma can meet, uh, sorry, as well as ensuring Petaluma can meet updated state environmental requirements. Fiscal year 2526, surface water projects will be largely funded through storm drainage impact fees with some support from grant funding. The Wilson Street Pump Station is one of our key stormwater facilities. Much of the existing equipment is past its useful life, and it is increasingly difficult to find parts to continue to maintain the pumps. We are currently finalizing the project's design, which was guided by a condition assessment, and we will be starting construction on the outfall improvements soon. In fiscal year 2526, we plan to continue phased construction of the project. Overall, the improvements to this pump station will help to reduce maintenance costs as well as to improve increased flood protection and ensure the stormwater systems perform when we need them most. There are also twelve planned wastewater utility projects for fiscal year 2526 with a budget of approximately twenty-five point five million. These projects represent critical infrastructure needs for our community's wastewater management system, and executing them is extremely important for the continued collection, transportation, and treatment of wastewater. The total fiscal year 2526 budget for wastewater utility projects will be entirely funded by wastewater capital. Among the major wastewater, uh, planned wastewater projects for fiscal year 2526, we are advancing the final design of the new PIPs Parallel Force Main from Hopper Street to Ellis Creek. We will continue ongoing sewer main replacements along Howard, St. Francis, and D Street, targeting aging pipes and helping prevent sewer overflows. And at Ellis Creek, we'll, we'll be upgrading the chemical systems to improve reliability, safety, and meet water quality standards. A key project that we wanted to highlight is the PIPs Parallel Force Main. PIPs, or Primary Influent Pump Station Force Main, plays a critical role in conveying wastewater from Hopper Street to Ellis, to the Ellis Creek Recycled Water, Water Recycling Facility. We have three large capital projects included in the full five-year catalog, with two of the projects planned to make advancements in fiscal year 2526. We are currently designing the new Parallel Force Main that will run alongside of the existing line, allowing us to maintain operations while enabling future improvements. Once the Parallel Force Main is under construction, we will move forward with a separate project to replace the pump infrastructure. Finally, with the new Parallel Force Main and pump, pump infrastructure in place, we will return to the existing Force Main to make, uh, much-needed repairs and upgrades. As mentioned, we are currently working on the first of these three projects, the Parallel Force Main. We have completed ninety percent design for the Parallel Force Main, as well as completed environmental regulatory compliance, and the next steps include securing the required permits and easements. We plan to bid the project in fall of 2025 and start construction in summer of 2026 with an estimated two-year construction schedule. This project also includes a new pedestrian and bike path from Baywood to Casa Grande, offering a safer alternative to Lakeville and better access to Schoenberger Park. For fiscal year 2526, we have programmed nine water utility projects with a combined budget of approximately four point eight million. These projects address key areas of water infrastructure, including pipelines, storage, and control systems. The scopes of these projects range from water main replacements and tank upgrades to improving, to improvements in monitoring and distribution software. Collectively, this work is improve, uh, is aimed at improving system resiliency, expanding capacity where needed, and supporting long-term conservation and operational efficiency goals. This slide shows a budget breakdown of the funding sources for the proposed fiscal year 2526 Water Utility CIP projects. The total four point eight million dollar budget for these utility projects will be funded through a combination of water capital and grant funds with a very small percentage from wastewater capital, which is supporting AMI. The Lacresta Tank is one of the older components of our water system, and replacing it will improve storage reliability, ensure consistent water pressure, and upgrade seismic safety for the upper zone of our distribution network. On the right, we're showing a typical water main, uh, and service replacement project, and these types of projects are ongoing throughout the city. They're focused on replacing aging infrastructure, reducing leak risk, and improving water quality and pressure reliability for our customers. We coordinate these types of projects with street restoration and paving work whenever possible to reduce community disruption and to stretch our capital dollars. The tables on this slide and the next show a summary of the planned projects for fiscal year 2526 by division that we've just reviewed and discussed. I know that the tables here are hard to read, but they are here to serve as a consolidated reference list. As a reminder, this is not a comprehensive list of all the projects in the full five-year capital improvement program, but a list of the projects planned for fiscal year 2526. Projects that are included in the five-year CIP but are not shown on this list will not have funding allocated to them in fiscal year 2526. This project list also represents what the CIP team can do with its current resources and staff bandwidth. We feel like this is a very robust and ambitious CIP program, and based on staffing levels, there is not a lot of opportunity to add projects to the current fiscal year. This is why we plan for a five-year CIP program to allow us to catalog the entire community's needs while allowing us to continue to address projects in out-years. Thank you so much for your time. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions now.
Thanks for bringing that back around. Um, I think before we get the council going, I think, um, we'll do our public comment first, and so I'd like to ask the clerk if, um, she'd read our messaging, please.
Absolutely. Uh, we did receive fifteen public comments on this item. And members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. Looks like we might have one card coming.
Good evening. Could anybody please tell me how many miles did the city have paved so far? Because the road is so horrible. If you see the bottom of my shoes just walking from my front door to my car, it'll blow your mind away. But I'd like to replace my shoes. Can I send a bill to the city manager for the city to pay it? You guys just wasted so much money in my neighborhood and maybe somewhere else painting the stop on the pavement, which is nothing but wasting money. So please, I'd like to get an answer to how many miles you have paved, because I don't see much improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, and that closes public comment on these two items. And I'm sure our staff crack has that from the roads, uh, report last year, and we can probably get that out and published. Um, so bringing that back up to council, who, uh, has the lead-off question here? Both the general fund and others? Well, I do. Um, so, the general fund, um, I'm very impressed that we were able to hold it uh, at, at a modest rate of growth. I mean, I think less than inflation. So I appreciate staffs, uh, pulling whatever tricks to keep our costs down at that level. And, um, for me, that's the important one. I noticed also the general, the, the general fund, fund balance, uh, remains constant, and, uh, the reserves that are in it are appropriate for what our goals are. So, um, I'm liking all that, but from our FOS last week, you know, we're seeing things churning on us. I think maybe we've been in a bit of a golden era for the last half dozen years, and, and we can't predict it's going to be that good into the future in the general fund. And, um, I think we're adding twenty-five positions in the general fund, and, um, none of them police and fire. And so I'm wondering, what kind of security do we have for the new employee we're bringing on? And, uh, I appreciate the ones in Public Works and Parks, but I'm more concerned that the most imperiled areas are support, the things that have like general names to them. So, uh, there's eight positions in support services. Do we good, feel good about being able to fund the general fund into the future with, uh, another, um, I think it's, uh, ten percent more employees into next year?
Ah, yes, I can answer that. Um, I think at this point, we do. We're not actually forecasting, uh, recession at this point, and we're not forecasting further downturns in our sales tax or property tax. Um, we're expecting things to stay level or to grow. So we do feel confident at this point. I also want to point out that the majority of the positions that we're adding are getting non-general fund dollars, um, to support them. So when we look at, you know, water resources and utilities, um, the, you know, some of the public works, um, positions, those aren't just general fund positions. There are other funds that are helping pay for those. So we do feel confident at this point that the general fund and all city funds can support the level of staffing that we brought forward.
And Jesse, uh, do you mind if I just jumped in for a second? I just wanted to point out, um, we do have, uh, some additional slides here, Mayor, uh, on the general fund forecast. And so I think Cory will go into some more detail about some of our assumptions and the longer-term, uh, five-year forecasts as well.
I think I'm confident in the backup slides. I, um, I kind of wanted to hear that, uh, confidence stated. And, um, especially given what we're seeing from other cities and, and, um, they're, they're having to reduce, and that's, and I mean, it's not the council I want to sit on. I'm sure it's not the department you want to be in. But, um, yeah, it's tough. It, we're heading into tougher times. You can see it across all the municipalities, and I don't want to be the last one to figure it out. So, uh, that was one question. Councilmember Shribs?
First, wonderful quantity of work. I mean, it's amazing how much stuff is getting done above and beyond even the basics. Um, I did have a few folks have, uh, come to me and just sort of asked what's happening with these things. I'm not sure if this is the time and place to do it or, or some other time in our agendas. But just topics on, uh, updating on trestle and where we're at and what are the possibilities or alternatives that we were looking at as possibilities? Downtown bathrooms was another topic of, um, that's been on the list a long time. We're still not quite there yet. Um, and what are some alternatives, especially if some new ones, ideas that may have just been generated? Uh, folks are asking about the D Street timeline, uh, what's happening there, and, um, where that is within, in the monies, and, uh, maybe some alternatives that we might be able to look at to add in to make sure that we cover all the bases on that. Uh, for the Ellis Creek Water Recycling Facility, the biogas production seems to be stalled because we're, um, we're fixing things and, but one of the statements was that the biosolids, um, we, we may not have sources for the biosolids to fill it properly as a statement. So I just kind of want to check in on, on that. Why? Um, because we would love to get some, um, uh, natural gas production going for our vehicles if we can. Another one is, um,
Do you want to, um,
Yeah.
Give them in like bunches of three or four and,
Or we can, we can do it in bunches or,
Let's, let's hit those first ones first.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council and public. Uh, Steve Worrall, I'm the Deputy Director of Environmental Services, and prior to March, I was a senior civilian here in capital projects. So I'll speak to a couple of those, uh, councilmember shrubs. For the trestle, your timing is opportune. Stay tuned for next Monday, and I think we'll probably fill your ears up with, uh, some of the questions you just asked. And if we can, I defer a lot of the trestle questions to the workshop next week, where we'll talk about the current project status, offer some design alternatives, and really talk through the next steps for that project. For the Ellis Creek, um, biomass to biofuel. So the current status right now, digester two is undergoing maintenance. It's, without getting too into the weeds, we need that digester online to treat the biosolids that would generate additional biogas. So we have the high-strength waste, the, uh, compressed natural gas, and the additional solids handling equipment onsite and near-ready to start up. But we can't run all of that equipment until the digester is back online. So really, the digester is identified as critical path to reaching full completion of that project. We're fixing that first. And then our plan is to evaluate, you know, where do we go next with the rest of that project? And the cost benefit of completing and turning all of that equipment on and looking at other options. And so I think you can expect a more detailed workshop on that in the future. But for the time being, digester two is our focus. And once that's back online, we have a much more clear path to turning on all of the B-to-B equipment.
Yeah, uh, but there was a statement in there, I saw that, uh, there was a question of, do we have a source of the biosolids to fill it?
Yeah, so that's one of the things we'll have to do ultimately is arrange contracts with high-strength waste, um, disposers, generators, to bring that material to Ellis Creek. And so we don't have those people under contract, because right now, we can't. And so we don't have those people under contract because right now we can't receive that waste.
Okay.
So I think there is, there are sources. It's just we're not under contract.
I just want to clear that statement up on that. Continue.
Yep. So does that address the questions you had on those two projects?
Those two, yes.
Great.
And then I can talk on the downtown bathroom, but then I might need you to repeat some of the other questions because the downtown bathroom was the only one I remembered after those two that Steve answered. So for the downtown restroom, we received that email that was forwarded to us by council. And we're going to look at that in our, that type of cinder block restroom into our analysis that we did of all the different sites and restroom types. We had looked at something similar of prefabs. The problem is we have a lot of limited space downtown. And what we're trying to do is to minimize project costs by locating the restroom where we have access to utilities. So one of the other challenges with other restroom types other than like the Portland Lou is they require like a permanent power source. And so the Portland Lou option, we were actually going to be running off of solar with battery backup. So that gave us more flexibility of the location. Whereas the PG&E timelines for pulling a permanent power source take quite a bit of time. And so it wouldn't really necessarily help the project timeline by switching to a different restroom type.
Right. I think most of those are like small numbers of bits and pieces for facilities. Are we considering the option of actually taking, we have some empty spaces downtown? What about possibility of grabbing one of those spaces and converting it into multiple units? Have we considered that and for cost-wise? I would think that would be comparable.
CIP hasn't, doesn't have like a project where we're looking at specifically the different spaces downtown. We've looked at near the Petaluma Pie Company and that refurbishing that restroom. But in terms of other downtown spaces, I don't know if there's anybody else in parks maybe that have looked into that.
Councilmember Shribs, are you, when you say empty spaces, are you talking about privately owned storefronts?
Is it possible we could purchase and renovate and change one of those spaces for our uses?
Well, I mean, I would imagine the highest and best use would be trying to get businesses in there.
Yes. I was just thinking of a number of units that we might want to have. Anyway, it's just something to consider. So we'll talk more about that later. And then in the list I gave already, the, the D Street timeline at the moment, is that being extended? And will we be considering several alternative plans that will be presented to us eventually?
Kristen, I don't know if you and Mary could talk to the time, current timeline a little bit? Our drink is Jeff's.
You're welcome. So Jeff Sussman, Deputy Director of Operations. So the, the D Street project, as with a lot of our utility projects, have been pushed out. So we're looking for a fiscal year 26, 27 for construction of that project. So it's really, it would be construction of year 27 in the summer with St. Francis and a preventive maintenance project. And yes, when it, when it will come back to council for kind of public outreach and final design, because that was what we promised as part of the quick build traffic calming.
Right. And, and given the, some of the concerns out there, we'll be looking at several alternate plans that we can talk about and discuss, or are we just going to see one plan?
You'll see multiple. I mean, we, there's only limited of how much we can do. We can go back to like what we had before the traffic calming that we have now. And then there's maybe one option in between, like a hybrid. So as, as we get closer, we'll flush that out and bring it back to the community for input.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the public understands what we're doing. Okay, good. Then the two new ones I didn't mention earlier, as I was driving down to Sonoma on Freitas Road, there's, looks like there's a whole bunch of purple pipes going in that are over by the Green Stream Farm. But there's also an operation going in by the fields there. It looks like green pipe rather than purple pipe. I was just wondering if that's PG&E, if that's all tied together? And where is the endpoint for all that recycled, is it going up to the fields up there directly above Green Stream Farm, or is it going further out? Yeah, so I'm sure folks are seeing all that work being piled up and done. It's sort of like
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Daniel Herrera, Deputy Director of Operations for Water Resources and Utilities. So the Adobe Project Recycle Water, it extends from Adobe. So the first phase is at Freitas in Adobe, and it goes around that corner. But the ultimate project is to attach itself and make a loop system as the, the other, the end of the pipeline goes, it kind of terminates up towards a farm up around the corner, about two miles, I think past. So we're just going along Adobe. That's all we're doing. And we're getting services to those properties that are adjacent to Adobe Road.
And are those all vines or are?
And I'm going to ask that if we have, have this as a listed project with a nice definition already in this book or in last year's book, staff reference us to that.
Correct. It's the phase two. It'll be the phase two portion of the Adobe, of the Adobe Road project.
And probably approved at council sometime prior. So we probably have that background.
Should be in the book.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Just that being that I've so much work, so many folks are seeing all the work out there.
Yeah, I can't speak to the green pipe out there, but the purple pipe is definitely ours. So I didn't notice if there's any green.
Yeah. Okay, that, that might be a separate PG&E project for somebody out there.
Could be theirs, correct.
Looks like there's a separate thing going on. Okay, just checking in that. And just last question, since we've added many, several numbers of people over the last couple of years. But one area that was not been added to that's been requested in the past, just wanted to get an update, is for like our parks and maintenance area for all the fields and recreation. Since we're adding in the fairgrounds, we're adding in other things. We're adding skate park and we're adding in Lucasey Field. So I was just wondering if there's going to be any plans to increase that department because that doesn't seem to have increased.
So the one additional position for citywide facility maintenance is going towards helping maintain city facilities. So less for fields, but more for all of the city buildings that we and the community use.
Right, those are for, for the buildings. But, but with the fairgrounds being added in, large numbers of pieces of property, plus the park over there on Washington Street, we've done so much more and plan to do so much more. I was wondering if we have any plans for increasing that department of staff because they've been working so hard for so long.
So councilmember Shribs will go, thank you, Drew.
Yep.
Good evening. Thanks for getting me up here earlier. I appreciate it. Drew Halter, Director of Parks and Recreation. I appreciate the questions, councilmember shribbs. So outside of the pretty exciting capital projects that we have, including the skate park, the turf replacement, swim center plastering, we also have several exciting kind of minor construction or projects that are underway to bolster our, our maintenance. At the community sports fields in particular, we're really focused on tree planting, the parking lot wells. We'll have reclaimed water, trees planted in the fall and winter as part of that project. We also have some water conservation projects in several of the ball fields, replacing meters, things like that, that don't really show up on the capital program, but are within our focus, within our operating budgets.
Yeah, yes, lots of work is happening, but are we adding any people to help do all this work?
Yeah, we're excited that this budget is increasing over the, over the course of the last three or four years, have increased our, our labor. Measure M is a big factor in allowing us to have our seasonal maintenance workers. And then with the investment in equipment that we've had the last couple of years, it's really time to use that equipment and get out there and, and implement the program.
All right, thank you. I just wanted, because people ask, I'll just get updates on these items for the moment.
Absolutely.
And the last one was coming down to the budget, the fund. Just to reiterate, explain again, because we went from $306 million to $348 million for expected expenditures, and that's $42 million difference. So could you explain again exactly where that's coming from and how much more with that budget are we going to be spending the $348 million in the year, which means that's $42 million more work than the 306 original?
Correct. So we anticipate bringing in new dollars of $306 million. But then we have budgeted expenditures of 348, as you mentioned. So that difference, that 42 million is coming from across all city funds. I'd have to dig into the numbers to tell you exactly which funds. But, you know, we have over 120 different funds with activity for the city. And so within each fund, we're making sure that we have enough revenues coming in plus reserves in the fund to cover the level of expenditures that we plan to have. And so we, that's very common. A lot of that comes from things that cross fiscal years. So we might receive grant dollars in one fiscal year that we don't fully expend until the next fiscal year. So we receive the revenues in year one, and then we have a bunch of expenditures in year two that are pulling from those revenues that are now sitting in the fund balance. Things like capital improvement projects often span multiple fiscal years. We're always trying to get, you know, the transfers and the budgets just right, but timelines change. And so it's very common for us to, you know, have things that span years in this way and pull from our reserves. It doesn't mean we're spending all of our savings. It generally means that there are just timing inconsistencies between when we receive money and when we're spending the money.
Good. So that means we're going to be doing $42 million more work this year than last year?
The, I would have to go back and look at what last year's, oh, yeah, because last year it was about 42 million less. It's confusing when we have the same 42 in two different places. Yes. So I mean, basically, yes, we are planning on spending more now. When you start saying it in terms of work, it gets a little hinky because of course, you know, the cost of everything's going up. So, you know, we, it's a little more work, but also we have ongoing inflation that just is driving up the cost of everything that we do. So naturally, everything continues to be more expensive.
Okay, just wanted to check in there because those, those numbers are, those are the big numbers that get me a little worried about. We're spending a lot more, but with the same number of people, same number of projects, but a lot more expenses. So is that going to get more work done or is it just higher costs? And what expectations we might have? And is there any money left over maybe to do some of the things if things get, if some of our nonprofit partners get cut, will we have money left over to help?
I was just going to add that that 42 million that we're drawing down on the reserves is major, the majority of it is in the utility funds and the special revenue funds, which are for capital projects, very large capital projects that we are implementing in fiscal year 26. We have fund reserves across the board in all of our funds. So some funds have larger fund balances than others. We certainly have some funds and fund reserves in all of the housing funds that can be used for a variety of, of projects and programs. But the majority of the drawdown of reserves in 26 is in those two categories, special revenue and utility funds.
Good. So that just tells me that the city is working really well. We have revenues left over. We're in good shape. Probably the best shaped town in Sonoma County maybe. So congratulations on, on our financial business plan and what we're doing, basically. So I just want to make sure we're, how, how well we're doing and moving forward with what we're doing. We're in really good shape compared to most cities around here. Thank you.
I would push back on that a little bit. The general fund is where most of the people are, most of the work is. And, and that's the area to work on. So much of the funds are in our special funds or utility funds or other places where they're in comfort and cannot provide for the basic services should we come short on basic service funds. So we're in a position where we need to be very careful on the general funds. And when we say the budget's going up 40 this year, 20-something is going into capital projects. And then, you know, if you look at the fund balances, you'll see which ones are being used for, for which measures, but they're not general fund where most of our worry is should, should we have economic challenges. And we were nearing 200 million in the bank two years ago. And because of high capital achievement and other, other things, we're down now at the 110 at the end of this coming year. 118 million in the bank at the end of this coming year. And that's dramatic swing in what's going on. When we look at our budget increasing each year and getting more done, pulling 40 million out of the fund balances only lasts two more years if you do it that way, which we won't. But, but, you know, we are seeing the same end that others see. We're just seeing it in a different timeline and in different areas. One of the things that you mentioned, D Street, is one of the things that worries me, we specifically wrote into the ordinance. I think staff feels a commitment, but the ordinance also calls for the pilot lasts until a design is brought back to council. So as it delays, if it delays, the pilot lasts longer. And unless the staff brings forward an option to, to, you know, enough data is available, they can make solid recommendations. But when we delay things, we, you know, because of world conditions and staff conditions and other reasons. But when things don't happen on the timeline that they're scheduled, there's a lot of ramifications to not getting projects done. I did want to ask for an explanation of how the funds work because it's, it's a little tricky. And so there's hypothetically, one big old project that we have is Lucasey Turf Replacement. And I'm looking at CIP 35. And it shows that this current year, we've spent $2 million on that. I'm thinking we didn't spend $2 million on a Lucasey turf field yet. Is that the intended contract to occur before end of fiscal year, and we can book the money before the end of this fiscal year? I love there's an expert for everything in the room.
Hi, Josh Manchall, Senior Civil Engineer. So for the projection, we had locked in the, those expected costs, but that was also split over the fiscal year. And so as we shift that and we're looking at a new timeline, and so we're probably going to end up wholly within the next fiscal year. So what you're seeing for this year added to next year's expected budget.
And, and that's exactly where I was going. Is that money go away at end of budget year? Are you able to carry the unspent balance in? And if, let's say it's 2 million that carries into next, into the budget we're looking at, is that reflected quickly in the, I mean, we'll adopt the budget and then it's three months, I think it is, before we see first pass on the next round. So will that increase the capital expenditure from 79 this year, is it 76 this coming year for capital? Will it bump it up by two on that project alone? And so is, you know, when do we see how much bigger the capital got than what we approved at this point?
We'll see exactly how much it is once we get through bidding and we open the bids. So right now, they're estimates, right?
When's the anticipated bid date?
We are looking around the July timeframe.
Not in this fiscal year?
So right at the end of the fiscal year, yeah.
So when will we see all of the carryover money accumulate? And what do we anticipate that will be for the real number of capital next year rather than the 76?
Assuming the bids come in in July, we will likely have the result of all the bids and how it differs from what we budgeted in 26. And any adjustments will come forward in first quarter.
And in this past year, do you have any idea how much all the carryover increased the capital? I know everything's in the book.
On the top of my head, no. Any funding for this project, which I believe has grants, is that correct, for the Lynch Creek? I'm sorry, for the turf?
We, we, I think we put that grant funding into the skate park.
Okay. So, so most of the funding for the, for the turf replacement is discretionary money. So meaning it comes from either general fund, measure U, or TOT. So projects funded with discretionary funds stay with the project regardless of the timeline changes.
And the, the line item under, there's Lucasey Skate Park, it says 1.8. When do we anticipate bid date on that?
That one, we're looking a little bit further out. I think we were looking at probably August-ish. We're trying to fine tune some details on like the lime treatment.
So both of these items and items similarly, projects similarly throughout, they show in the estimated completed work for 24, 25. Is that how we got our number that's on page three for what was completed in capital this, this year? With these numbers or other numbers?
Yes, that's how we get it. So, you know, our CIP team does their best estimates of where they think we're going to fall at the end of the year. But of course, it's always, you know, off by a little bit depending on actual timelines. And so that's why we do process carryforwards as needed to make those adjustments in the first quarter of the next year, to make sure that all of the projects have the funding that they need to complete the work as planned.
Thank you. I, I get the complexity of the, I mean, I know what you're working with. And in each of the past years, this sort of reflects out in fund balances, how we're doing at fund balances. And each of the past years, we've grown our fund balance. This year, we've not grown our fund balance. This year, we got more and better done. So thank you, and you and you. I do notice that the number we show now can drop dramatically. But am I right that basically it adds dramatically back with what the carry in balances over a two-year period?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we don't get it done this year, we just move the budget and the work to the following year.
Thank you very much for the increased capital projects this year. And Vice Mayor, now?
Well, to continue on the parks that the mayor was mentioning, I, I'm thrilled that Parks is getting more in the budget. I don't know where Drew is. There he is. I'm very pleased and I'm very happy with what is happening and the future plans for Parks. And I'm looking forward to seeing that Fairgrounds information. But on the Kennelworth Park, we spent a lot of time last year planning with the neighborhood. It's not going to be on the, the budget books until twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I was thinking that some of those children that were helping plan that park are toddlers. Now they're going to be going into elementary school. So I just wanted to mention that when we do plan parks and we get the neighborhood excited about something and then we don't do it for five years, we might put something, you know, a lot of times, goals have thermometers outside and, you know, or we'll say, this project is coming. Look forward to, I think we're painting the wall is, that could be the first phase. Just inform the neighborhood on what's happening. So thank you, Drew.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Councilmember. And just to provide some context to that comment, yes, absolutely. We're, we're very proud of the community engagement, the outreach that we've all done, working with our Recreation Music and Parks Commission, several community workshops, surveys. We have a really exciting concept plan up to about a thirty percent park plan. And what we also found through that outreach is we didn't limit ourselves to that park footprint. And that was intentional. And once we did that, we talked about how it connects to the larger active transportation plan, how it incorporates the programming at the library and the improvements that were done there. And as we got closer to that, it's really important to understand with the Fairgrounds master plan coming and potential avenues to help fund that master plan, those two projects really did start aligned together. So at this point, we think it's in the best interest to, to really celebrate that plan for what it is. But you're right, communicate out to say, hey, we've got a really exciting thirty percent concept park plan based on all this feedback. But we really think that also can help launch into some of the Fairgrounds master plan as well.
But we might want to communicate that because the people in the neighborhood ask questions like, when is this going to be happening? And, and when you say, oh, twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight, they're like, oh, wow. We, you know, they all expected to have instant gratification and have it done within the year. So that's just something, or we could maybe post those, those informative boards that we had up during the workshop, especially when the library goes back to the library and not in the Kennelworth Center. And what we're doing, I think we're painting those walls.
The murals are underway. We're excited about that. If you haven't seen those.
And so maybe, you know, I'm always, I'm always trying to get the city to communicate with the community because they're walking by going, what happened? Was there graffiti? They don't know. So, and unless you're in tune to these meetings, you're not going to know what's happening in the community. But just maybe some sort of a QR code that says, here's what's happening. Here's our projection and our project plans for this area. So I'm thrilled, but I'm in the know and I just want to help the community be in the know. And along with that, I'm leaving Parks, I'm going to Streets, the public comment on Streets. Can we have someone in staff do, how much work we have gotten done on or miles of roadway? We have gotten paved. I don't know, I don't know who to look for in the audience. But that's a great public service announcement.
So I don't know, Jonathan, if we can pull up that wonderful graphic that we show all the different roads that we've done. But just speaking that we are able to increase our pavement condition index speaks volumes.
Yes.
Seven points, that's significant.
That would be awesome. Also, that versus paint. Because a lot of those painted curbs, painted road stops, crosswalks, the bull belts, those are for our safe streets. And that is very important to communicate to the community that we are doing this because it's for safety for our pedestrians, especially the children going to and from school, families with bicycles, strollers, scooters, those kind of things. So those are my biggest concerns. On the downtown bathrooms, I know we're in the design phase, but what can we get for the design phase? I'm not sure if that, if we can get just one Lou. I mean, we don't have to get them all, or we could do the upgrading to the visitor center bathrooms. I'm not sure if that's included in it.
I, I'm not sure if I understand. So when you say, what are we getting for the design phase?
Right. We're looking at something portable downtown, correct? Not brick and mortar, but we have some brick and mortar. Can we get those fixed or improved? We have, we, we have the one at the visitor center.
Correct.
And smart.
And we, and we fund the maintenance in that.
And we have the one at Walnut Park. And then we could talk to the private owner of the one that's in the Helen Putnam Plaza.
We have.
We have, okay. Well, I just wanted to put that out there, that there's three brick and mortars.
And we do provide services in those restrooms, both in Walnut Park and at the, at the train station. And we fund the maintenance for that.
Okay. And then what are we doing? It says the design phase of the Keller Street Garage. Because I don't know if we want to put that portable potty facility in that area or some other area or, I mean, I basically know it needs a paint job, that it needs to be power washed.
We're doing the, we're doing the power washing actually in the next month.
Oh, that's, that's fabulous news.
And, and just to clarify one thing on the downtown restroom. So the facility that staff has been looking at is not actually portable. It is a fixed structure that would be fully plumbed into city water and sewer. So it is a, it is a set fixed location that would not just be like a enhanced porta potty. So it's definitely a step up from that. We looked at several different options. Staff did a lot of research on. There are self-cleaning options. There are all sorts of functionality that you can get, but really trying to strike a balance on a very expensive level of maintenance versus something that we can easily keep clean and fresh and safe and well-lit for folks to use. So the CIP staff did an awesome job looking at different options. I think we've landed on one that will work for the downtown that, as Jonathan mentioned, is in a smaller footprint. But it is an actual building. So the garage, I think we did look at the garage, didn't we, Jonathan? And so all of those locations had a lot of pros and cons that staff had to weigh in order to, you know, come down to a, a shortlist of, of possible spots.
And the problem we, and the problem we had with the, when putting the porta potty in the Keller Street Garage, then you are also, we've got our, our frequent flyers who will stay in the garage. And that's some of the reason why folks aren't using the garage. So we're trying to balance that need.
Well, I, I look forward to some, some details on that. Thank you.
Yeah, but I think council needs to keep reminding themselves, I know staff is living in this, but this is priority conversations. Would we rather spend the money on this or this, where there's latitude to move between funds? And so part priority and part funding magic, how do we pop it out of a pot to get it in another pot? To that point, the Kennelworth Park, maybe an early conversation on the Kennelworth Park would be a one million dollar upgrade happens in one year, a nine million dollar upgrade. You know, that doesn't, that may or may never make the spending priority of a council. And a couple of years out gives us time to breathe and figure out whether nine million dollars for that park is the right investment. So do I see another, did I see a question down this end? Councilmember Quine?
Thank you. Going back to the beginning, can you bring up slide number five, please? Lot of slides. That, so I was looking for the slide that you, that mentions reformulating. I think it was the first slide that we looked at, reformulating E-Dog. Yeah. So focus on econ development, reformulate economic development, open government, plus CDD and CMO assistance. Can, can we get some clarification on that?
Sure. And we'll also be talking about this in the, in the general fund conversation. We are looking at putting more resources to our economic development focus. And currently, E-Dog oversees IT and comms. And so what we are looking at is, we've got two positions that will be totally focused on economic development plus one full position in community development and a half position in the CM, in the city manager's office. So for an equivalent of three and a half positions in the new fiscal year.
Got it. So as we, you know, we talked about a little bit, the, in council priorities, we talked about economic development being a priority that we want to lean into. And so I just, you know, want to make sure that our, the, the budget reflects that and that we're moving in the right direction there.
You'll definitely get to hear more about that in, in a few more slides. So definitely happy to walk you through that.
Great, thank you. Okay. I think it was slide twenty-nine, capital improvement slide twenty-nine. And it talked about the PIPs project. So there we go. So, and, and this was also referenced again, I think it was slide sixty-five or sixty-six. So I understand the PIPs project will create a multi-use path from, I thought it was Sumerina. It was mentioned Baywood. Actually, can you go to that sixty, I think it's sixty-five or sixty-six? There, yeah, this is the one. So, so you mentioned that the multi-use path is going to go from Baywood over to Casa Grande. On the graphic here, assuming the green line, and I wasn't sure if the green line was the active transportation pathway or the red line, either way, both of them extend under one oh one over to Hopper Street. And I, my question is, for this project, do we, do we foresee that multi-use path making that connection? I know we, we, we've talked about it in council a couple of times, completing that connection between Hopper Street and, and, you know, under the bridge. Is that part of this project or is that going to need to be another phase?
Do I need to push it back? Nope, it works. Hi, I'm Krista Arnold, Senior Engineer in CIP. So in this graphic, the green line is the existing PIPs parallel force main and the red line is the new parallel force main. The bike path and the pedestrian path that we're constructing, it's a dashed blue line that's kind of under the bicycle. It is quite difficult to see, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that goes from Baywood to Casa Grande. We are not planning on extending the pathway under one oh one as part of this project.
Got it. So, you know, my wish list or my hope would be that we reconsider that and potentially, if, if there's an avenue for making, for completing that under the one oh one, that we do so. The reason why is when you look at the north side of town, we have the Smart Trail, the Smart Trail. The Smart Trail effectively creates a site, a safe, bikeable, walkable, rollable path for the whole, sort of the northeast side of town to downtown. There's improvements that need to be made at some of the crossings, but it's really a great, you know, asset for the community. And we don't really have anything. As someone who commutes or, or travels the southeast side of town to downtown a lot, a lot, most of the time on bike, we don't really have that. And this actually creates that. If we, at some point, we're going to have a capital improvement project on Casa, which hopefully we'll be able to enhance the active transportation on that. And essentially creates a, a, a great alternative path that gets you downtown and really right to, you know, the River Park and eventually, eventually the Caulfield Cross Town Connector. And so to the, you know, I just think about all that work that's going on under one oh one to get the parallel in, if there's a way to get this done. Because my fear is that, you know, it's going to, like, we're going to miss an opportunity and it's going to get delayed. So that's my comment. So I'm not necessarily looking for a response to that, just advocating for it. And that's, that's all I have.
If I may, Mayor, Patrick Carter, Assistant to the City Manager and the City Manager of Office. We agree, we've tried multiple times to get grants to fund that project. We do have a two million dollar commitment from SETCA to help, and it only can be allocated to projects that interface with Highway one oh one. So I think if Bjorn was here, he would say that we're, we're looking at every opportunity that we can to bridge that gap, just our grant applications we've done. I think our most recent one was to MTC, and they didn't decide unfortunately to, to fund us. There's also potential connections. We're looking at a safe routes to school project that would interface with Meowak School, which is really close by there. And so we're looking at all different opportunities to kind of make that active transportation safer, those connections safer for folks. Because I, I agree, having like, you know, going under the freeway there, there's not a great option for cyclists or pedestrians. So we are looking ways to, to fund that project.
Great. Well, I have no idea what that would cost at this moment. But if there was a number put to it, and if that was something that came before council for consideration, I would do my absolute best to advocate with my fellow council members to try and get something like that.
Yeah. Councilmember Quine, we actually have that in the CIP and it is partially funded. So we've been trying to explore, and we have Bjorn on the call as well, who I can let speak to a little bit more. But it's our Pedalima River Trail US one oh one rail crossing project. It's in the CIP. And I think we have a roughly two point six million dollar gap to complete the project. Total project budget's roughly seven point one million. And so it's the And so it's the current funding that we have secured is that Go Sonoma sales tax that was moved from another project from SETA and then traffic mitigation impact fees, funding another portion of it. But it's in an, the design we currently have planned for '26, '27 with construction '27, '28, if we can secure the rest of the funding for that project. But I know Bjorn's on here, I don't know if he wants to speak a little bit more to that as well.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Good evening, councilmembers, joining by Zoom here. I really don't have too much to add, just beyond the fact that that has been identified as a top priority in our draft active transportation plan. It's been a top priority for PBAC for years. We've pursued many grants. Unfortunately, it's just a very competitive environment going after grant funding for active transportation dollars with pretty much every city in California competing for the same small buckets of funds. The only other thing I'll add, just with that project, unfortunately, it's not as simple as just creating a new pathway across the Smart Trax there because it is extremely challenging to get new at-grade rail crossings approved. So that's a case where we actually need to go either underneath or over the Smart Trax. We do have a viable option to go underneath their tracks. There was actually a culvert that was installed when they, when they constructed their drawbridge there that we can utilize and Smart's on board with that plan. So that's been identified for the time being as, as the best path forward for that project.
Great, thank you. I'll just say lastly on it, if, if doing it in conjunction with the PIPs project can save money, let's, let's consider that and revisit. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Just to add a little more complexity of what's coming, San Francisco Observatory Institute, working on the sediment studies, making proposals about this whole area, about doing eco tones and the like and incorporating all these possible ideas. I'm hoping we're communicating with those folks, those concept plans as they develop. Because then, as you're building this, then we could actually incorporate a lot of those concepts that SFEI is already generating for that. And according to this plan, the bicycle path does not really end at Casa Grande because Casa Grande is, could be a bicycle path. And there is actually a path around where the red line goes, all the way to Technology Lane, which goes into the trail that's on Adobe Creek. So you can actually go up and down Adobe Creek. If, even right now, you could do that right now. So there is a bike path that you could do on that area and then entering in Scholmberger Park, continuing all the way down to Ellis Creek Facility on the paths inside that. So there is some, are there things we, besides this, make sure we're coordinating with that concept plan so that we actually are bringing forward those ideas with this as we do that? That's just my recommendation, we make sure that that's there. And the bicycle pass, I think, is, is very doable with what we already have.
So I think what we're hearing is that the PIPs project should include a cyclical surface to the intercepts of any other path, like the multiple time denied River Trail path. Just where, where the, the PIPs line is, at least get that piece paved.
Right. But they're even, we're even talking about moving the bridge over at Scholmberger Park. The bridge is probably gonna have to get moved eventually from the direction of the Adobe Creek is going. So if we're gonna move it, you've got to move it upstream, well, this would be a perfect spot to put it. So let's at least include that in the concepts, at least have that in mind, working with their concept plan.
And another alternate that was discussed, I've had a chance to visit with staff about, was when PIPs gets under the freeway, if the bike path could align with 116 to, to In-N-Out Burger, you, behind the guardrail that's there between the tracks and the guardrail, so you don't have a rail crossing, I'd like to see those shown as alternatives because that might come in so much more, less expensive, but with more agency approval, which is always tricky. Okay. Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I asked a question about the McNear Grandstands and I just want to dig a little bit deeper into it. The response that was in the staff, in the staff response was longer-term considerations, which would benefit from considerable community engagement about what recreational activities would be best, would best be served by a project that preserves the existing footprint. It just doesn't, I'm not understanding that response. Can you shed more light on that, please?
Yes, I appreciate that. Councilmember, happy to clarify, yeah, that seemed a little government-y for a grandstand, so thank you for checking me. Essentially, when the grandstands was built, which again is, is one of the most kind of, most affinity for a, for a grandstand that we have in our city. The McNear Grandstands is not just historic, but nostalgic because of where, where it is. The baseball diamond that exists now was, was pushed up quite a bit and they have what they call the clamshell, which is your backstop. So in order to kind of bring that back to a standard play, considerable movements would have to be to realign that field. It's also important to note that the field was lit, which really allowed for the evening programs. Often adults in the programs play at night. So any conversation to restore grandstand with that level of spectator seating would typically come with expanded uses for adults. And lighting, parking, restroom facilities, those are what I refer to more as additional kind of constraints or opportunities that would benefit from community engagement. There is some additional parking that was done since those ball fields, 90 degrees on the opposite end of the park. But I think what my intent was is to say, the grandstand structure in and of itself would benefit a lot from preservation. It's, it's an incredibly neat structure. But once that's done, the ball field itself, the parking, the lighting, the uses, the permitting, the activity hours, all of that would really benefit from having a conversation at the same time.
Thanks. Okay. Councilmember Kater Thompson?
Thanks. I appreciate Councilmember Quinn, you know, tenacity with, you know, connecting all these trails. And I think it is important, if we're looking at the PIPs, how we can do that and other alternatives. Because when we talk about economic development, that's part of economic development. We have all these bikes, you know, for people to rent and people will come and just have other activities in the community. It's not always just being downtown, but it's actually spreading out. So I appreciate that and to look deeper into alternatives, as Councilmember Shribbs was talking about. I just want to talk about the Senior Center Parking Lot, which is not funded. It doesn't have much funding for it and I get a lot of complaints from that. The seniors are complaining that it's hard to park and then sometimes there are pickup trucks there with utility vehicles and they're really not connected to the senior park. So if we can just, you know, look at that as an important project to move forward. Because I've been down there quite a few times and it really is problematic and, and it's seniors. And I also want to thank Public Works for getting the 3 ADA spaces at Lucese Park, where the ball field is. And so, you know, when I look at that and then I look at the, the condition of the parking lot at the Senior Center, just want to put that out there. And as far as, where are all my notes? The public bathrooms, absolutely, we need to move on that. But we always talk about the importance of our museum and, you know, it's, needs to be retrofit. We keep hearing it and hearing it and yet it's only 3% funded. And so I think that, you know, should be a priority, that we need to protect that Carnegie Library slash museum. And it just doesn't ever seem like it's getting funding. And it seems like there should be grant funding, but I'm not sure with the federal government now slashing funding for museums and anything else. So I'm not sure how that's going to be funded, but I think it's, it's one of the most important buildings in our town to be looking at. And then when we're talking about roads, Washington Street, you know, you can drive on one lane and it's kind of smooth and then you drive on the inner lane if you're going into town. I mean, it's really, in really poor condition. And I know that's on the list, but it's not on the list very, you know, too soon. But it should really be looked at as more of a priority. And with that project, what is really entailed with Washington Street? With the undergrounding and to resurface the, the street?
Jeff, do you want to take that?
Thank you.
And I don't know if Chelsea or Drew, you want to talk about the Senior Center Parking? Because we do have a creative solution, which I just want to, I just want to emphasize, all of these things are priorities to us. It's just how much money we have, right? So we're trying and we are, as you hear from the staff, we're trying to integrate, make sure that we are, are looking at projects to be able to piggyback on those. But there's always funding gaps, so it's where we find it.
Yeah, I would just, just say, I mean, you mentioned the five-year plan. So it is in the five-year plan, thankfully, it's 30, 31, so it is a way out there. There is some planning work ahead of that project, too. As we were just talking the other day, from, from PBAC, it is, it's been a high priority to look at a corridor study for that one. So that, that's something that we'll start looking at and applying for grants to fund something like that, but that would lead into that project. I mean, we could flip, flip around the five-year plan, but kind of the purpose of the five-year plan was to have a project going forward that we have CIP deliver. Because all those projects on there are high priority, right? Casa Grande, Western, Daniel, Sophie, Push One. It's, you know, it's a whack-a-mole kind of.
I haven't even mentioned Casa Grande, that was next, so that's great.
Casa Grande is scheduled for '27, '28.
Appreciate, I appreciate that, but this is a major roadway, just like all of them, I guess. And it's pretty, pretty bad. Is there a possibility of just trying to smooth out some of the worst areas? Because if that could happen or looked at, that would be great.
Yeah, we could look at that.
Yeah, okay. And thank you for those ADA parking spaces.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate that, getting that done. And, that's pretty much it for right now. I might have some other questions later. Actually, I do want to go back to the Ellis Creek, the biosolids. Once the digesters are online, then we can go ahead and move to the other phases for the, for the biosolids. We're not for the biosolids, but for the, is it the biosolids? But it's the gas. Then, what does, what does that timeframe look like? Say, if the digesters are completed?
So the timeline for the digester repair, this summer. And then following that, we're going to come back to council with a list of options for the project because from the time that we started this, the B2B project or the biogas to biofuel, at that time, compressed natural gas had, it was, you know, the recology wanted compressed natural gas and, and there was a market for it. And as we're moving to electrification, the market is changing. So we're still talking to recology. They understand that our digester is down and is under repair right now and that we're still in discussion with them to complete the project as designed. But then there's also some other projects we can consider and other uses for that gas. So we'll be coming to council after we can complete the, the digester repair. And then there's some remaining parts of the high-strength waste portion of that project that need to be completed as well.
Okay, and thank you very much. I think that's probably, actually, I do want to just mention something about the trestle. I mean, it does look horrible down there. And it would be great if we could do something to, well, when a decision is made, take the timbers that are good and store them somewhere and just start cleaning it up so it doesn't look like it does today. Anything is going to be better than what it looks like from the Water Street area. And then where you, when you're going to Riverfront Cafe, I mean, that is degrading more and more all the time. And it would be great if there, what I'd like to do is work with Smart and figure out really what we're going to be doing about this. Because we have $75,000 for a design, but I think we really need to get down to the nitty-gritty of.
Corey, would you mind repeating how much we have spent, we will have spent by the end of this fiscal year on, on the, on the Smartown trestle?
That's $905.
Yes.
$900,000 or any. But in, is that $600,000 this year's expenditure a good number? We drop that into design this year, so that's a good number. But I totally concur with you. When we talk about economic development, that's the economic disinvestment. You know, that's, that's preventing good things from happening in town and businesses from thriving in town and us from having to make harder choices about, like, how can we afford a downtown bathroom if we don't have better economic development? You know, if we don't have businesses that are thriving.
I think it's important because that's what we've been talking about for quite a while. And, you know, you have to have economic development to fund these types of projects. And so we just need to kind of tie it together so people understand, if you want one thing, sometimes we have to have other things to fund it. Because we're all talking about these wish lists. I mean, you know, roads and stuff should not be the wish list, but, you know, beautification and stuff, and they all cost dollars. And, you know, this is like my third budget hearing. I've been with Smart and then today with SETA. You know, everything looks good for the next few years, but what's going to happen after that when the grants start running out? And we really don't know what's happening with the federal government and where those dollars are going to be coming from. So I am concerned. I appreciate, you know, what our budget looks like, but I am concerned in two years from now what's going to happen. So my red flags are up. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree with you. And I think two weeks from now, we'll get very sobering news on the trestle. And I think then real test of priority will come about. And, and I for one will maintain a great deal of optimism. Again, back to the magic that happens with budgeting. But, but I think it's really important to the whole community that that project goes forward. So I'm looking forward to the sobering news. But there are others, everything is a, everything is a priority. And when that happens, nothing's a priority, they're all kind of the same. So I think we have to really narrow down what our top 10 in any category are and we have to ask for which ones achieve and finish this year. A lot of things have a lot of continuing numbers. And when you have a lot of continuing numbers, you're not finishing this year. Which ones can we get over the finish lines? Like what paving, what paving street? We did Maria last year. Which one is happening this summer? Which pavement we're doing this year, next year, that we're really committed to, that we really get paved in the summer and, and move our index up? If we don't pave streets at a certain rate, the PCI doesn't go up anymore. Even with Measure U, even with everything else, and we have to really focus on, you know, where do we want the money? What are the people demanding for their participation in Measure U? And, and for their participation in the goodwill of the city? We, we need to get more streets paved.
I just want to comment, since we're talking about streets on Rainier. I mean, it feels like it's been an eternity that it's been just a pilot program, but I think it's been positive that it's been so long because people can see that drivers, that it's safer just to walk even across the street right now. And with that project, it started off as, you know, almost just a surface replacement. And now we're going to get the purple line and I do have a question on that. So is the purple line only going to be from Maria Drive across McDowell? Because since you look at the map and you see where the purple lines go, it doesn't seem like it would, you wouldn't slice into it from Snow Mountain Parkway down. So I'm assuming it's from Maria Drive down, but I'm not sure.
Good evening, Oriana Hart, Water Resource and Conservation Manager. Yeah, the recycled water line is going to continue on from the extension we did on Maria Drive down Rainier, across McDowell to the Deer Creek Village area.
Appreciate that. One more question on that. So there were going to be, you know, the hookups that go into the quad lots? So is, I thought there was going to be some, when, when the street is open, that you were going to look and replace some connection to the houses?
Pottable laterals.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Or Mayor?
Yes, someone else wants to talk about the water laterals. I believe they are replacing those. We are making connections to places that would be viable recycled water connections. So there will be a lateral past McDowell to Deer Creek Village into the fire station and to some of the LED areas that would be able to use that water.
Okay, but back.
If you're talking about potable water, yes, we're doing water service replacements on that project.
Is that going to be from Sonoma Mountain Parkway to Maria and then from Maria down? Because there's, since the purple pipe isn't going there.
Yes, it would be anything that we're paving over in that section.
The potable will extend from Sonoma Mountain all the way down, and the recycle from Maria to McDowell.
Well, that's correct, but, right, but the purple lines are only going from Maria down, so I have it visualized that you trench a big hole. And are you going to do the same thing from Sonoma Mountain Parkway to Maria?
No, the connection is at the corner of Maria and Rainier right now. Yes?
The current pipeline is along Maria, so we're just making a loop system going down to McDowell.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about the connections to the homes.
So the recycled water lines?
Not the recycled. What Mayor said.
Yeah.
What are they called?
Potable laterals to get the water from the potable main over to the meter for each of these lots. They'll do that for the whole extent of the both sections. And so the purple is once the Maria to McDowell, but all the drinking water is all, everything from Sonoma Mountain, and that needs the work.
That's correct. So we're leaving the water main intact, but there's a lot of those laterals that feed the individual domestic meters for people's houses with potable water that are getting replaced.
Appreciate that. The only reason I'm asking is because I just realized that the purple line is only for Maria down, so that's why I wanted to clarify.
And I'm not sure there's any laterals, and that's the question I was going to ask, is there any recycled water use between Maria and McDowell? Or is it all for the commercials on the far side of McDowell?
There's a, oops, there's a potential LED that we're making a connection to. Other than that, it's the commercial across McDowell.
Well, I just want to thank you. I'm really looking forward to that project starting and ending, so thank you so much.
And I did want to add that those, the recycled water and the potable are listed as two different CIP projects, but constructed simultaneously.
I noticed that, thank you.
And those are currently out to bid right now.
And is the pavement separated from that contract?
Correct.
And so the pavement is listed in this coming year as well, '25, '26. Will that be in summer '26, or will it be in summer '27? These utility guys going to get out of your way?
When is Rainier getting constructed? Is that the...
You have all the money in this coming fiscal year?
We had to break off the paving because we had to do additional public outreach. So as soon as we do this public outreach, that I think a lot of people have been notified about, we'll put that out to bid. So it'll shortly follow it. So as soon as the water service and recycled water main is complete, paving will follow right behind.
Are you anticipating summer '25 or summer '26?
'25.
Probably late '25.
Okay.
So summer to fall.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Councilor Barnicle?
Yeah, okay. Got the disturbing news about McNeil Grandstand, so I'm back now. The, I asked a question about community development and zoning, and when we were going to start to evaluate the existing zoning, and I got a response about updating ADU and density bonus ordinance. Can we get, and then it said et cetera. Can I just get more expansive answer on what the plan is and what's driving those zoning code updates and whatnot?
Good evening, Councilman. So we're going to talk a little bit more about it in the general fund discussion, but just to give you a short answer of what's to be covered. So we have sort of a, let's, we're going to call it like a Phase 1 zoning code update. So that's coming to Planning Commission this summer, and it's going to be trailed shortly with the contract. We'll need to put the larger zoning code update to bid, so that itself would be coming to council. So that's, at that point, you could see the scope of what...
I would imagine the second one's going to be pretty expansive. Can you say what was in the first one? It said ADU and then ADU and density bonus, and that was, and then et cetera. I'm just wondering what the scope...
What the et cetera is.
Yeah, what the scope of the thing that's coming this summer is.
Got it. So there's a number of state laws, SB 9, SB 10, our ADU ordinance, our city ADU ordinance is, has not quite caught up to the state, and so there's going to be changes to align with the state. And so there's a small batch of amendments focused on that. And then, so I think we're also going to look at potentially, and I don't know if this is zoning code focused, but how do we make getting ADUs built? Are there impediments to the process? And those are things that we're working on, so I don't think that's actually part of the zoning code update itself. But I actually think that's, maybe it says et cetera, but, you know, it's much more focused. I know we talked a little bit about visibility. I think that came up with a couple specific projects. I think we have since addressed that, so I don't anticipate any changes to our visibility ordinance. But any of the larger changes to the zoning code, whether it's parking standards, setbacks, et cetera, would be in the larger scope. One other one that is just coming to mind, again, with the ever-changing landscape with the state, is the condo-ization of ADUs. And so the opportunity to bring online some missing middle housing for sale types, so someone builds an ADU, does a lot split, and then there you have a much smaller unit that can potentially come online for a lower price. So that's something that we would also be bringing as part of this package.
So we are bringing that forward as part of the ADU? Awesome. Excited to hear that. All right, I'll just get on my soapbox for the Parks Master Plan again. Right now, folks, on the, it's not funded. And what stands out to me on the parks is all the capital projects that are currently not in there. And there's been multiple that have been added. I'm not advocating that we start the parks planning process right now, because I think we're in Planapalooza in this year. But I just really want to emphasize to everybody up on the dais that, like in everybody in the room, we've got to get a parks plan in place, because we don't even know all the things we're not doing. And it's, you know, some of the most common complaints that I hear are about parks or about people speeding on their street or what have you. And I know Councilmember Cater Thompson loves recycled water, but like, I think the majority of our people in the city really just want good parks and roads and safe streets. So I really want to make sure that gets funded in the next year.
Okay, and I concur with you, master plans are key. I mean, I'm not sure if I'm still counting how many master plans we have teed up for this year. And I know we're getting back the water master plan and the recycled water master plan, so we can figure out without the subsidies that we've seen if it still is viable to do that. And it helps us sort our priorities. We're talking about all these different areas. I mean, if you had a consolidated plan, you could work from that. Councilmember Schrips?
Given the amount of passion we have here in the city for both the trestle and the museum, because there are lots of folks have written in letters on these two topics, trying to get us moved forward on them, and it's not in our budget. Has anyone in either of these two groups come forward and said, oh, let's go ahead and raise the $10 million we need from our own people? Has there been any offers from the community saying, hey, if you guys can't do it, maybe we can together in partnership? Has that been offered or been suggested?
And the answer is yes.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think anybody understands how hard it is to raise a capital campaign or the commitment involved in it. But people's passion is raised to the point where they say that, that they want to participate. They're looking for a green light, a completed design, and hopefully that all comes together next week at that meeting.
Yeah, I was thinking for the two projects, for the museum and the trestle, both, I think those are opportunities we need to really consider. Thanks.
Councilmember, now?
And on that subject, and maybe staff can bring it to us next week, the trestle campaign, you know, is through the Women's Club, and I believe they would like an MOU, is that the right, with the city between, because they're raising the money? And then I think a year or so ago, again, I said, give them a visual, maybe it's because I'm a retired teacher, you know, give the community a visual, like a, this is our goal, this is where we need to be, these are our hiccups, you know, who actually owns it? And it's not excuse, it's just that we are moving forward. But the Women's Club would like that MOU with their fundraising, so maybe for next week.
Well, I'm sure we want to hear what next week's news is before we get into fundraising. But anyone else in this arena? I guess this section already proves how much, how important economic development is going to be and how our, how our needs so outstrip our revenue currently. So if that closes, and if that closes things, let's take five and be back in no time. Thank you. Okay, well, that was a long discussion on a broad range of topics. And as you saw from the overview, there's still two more, two more topics to go. So who takes it from here?
I'll take it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we'll start the discussion with a very high, a very high level here. Fiscal year '25, '26, general fund revenues and expenditures are estimated at $80 million. Revenues equal expenditures, resulting in a zero working capital fund balance at June 30, 2026. Not shown here, and critical in the event of an emergency is approximately $14 million in designated emergency reserves that are available in the event of a natural disaster, pandemic, downturn in the economy. It is estimated that at June 30, 2025, so at the end of this fiscal year, our emergency reserves will be at approximately 19% of our general fund operating expenditures. Council policy is a minimum of 15% of operating expenditures, so we'll be slightly above that, and that helps to maintain our excellent credit rating and assist with any future bond issues at low interest rates. So we'll start with a more in-depth discussion about general fund revenues. We have revenues about $80.4 million, budgeted for '25, '26. That's about a $1.6 million or a 2% increase over the revised '24, '25 revenues. The increase, as can be seen, is spread across various revenue...
Could you slow down just a heartbeat?
The increase, as can be seen here, is spread across various revenue categories. We are expecting growth in the new year, albeit it's estimated slower growth than in recent years. Our property taxes include a 4.25% increase based on information from Sonoma County Assessor, and they are forecasted at a little over $15 million. It does include adjustment for continued assessed valuation growth and also accounts for estimated growth related to newer or current development projects. Our sales tax, we are forecasting $14.3 million, so that's basically flat in the new year compared to the current year. This does incorporate the most recent sales tax forecast provided by the city's sales tax consultant, and it includes just that slight increase going into the new year. Most sectors are expected to remain flat, with the exception of general retail, which is expected to grow by approximately 1%. Other categories, such as tax generated by online sales, continue to remain higher than in pre-COVID years, with receipts from the countywide pool nearly double what they were in 2019. There remains a great deal of uncertainty in the economic outlook due to continued inflation and tariff concerns, and therefore we are remaining conservative in our budgeting and forecasting. So we'll continue to monitor our activity like we always do closely, and as we progress through the year, and if necessary, further adjustments will be made. Business license revenues have shown moderate growth over the past few years, but we are anticipating virtually no growth with a very slight decline in the new year. Property transfer tax category has shown steady growth over the past several years and is expected to continue, but at a slower rate in the new year. Approximately $1.3 million is included in fiscal year '26, which is an increase of about $26,000 over '24, '25. Our franchise fees, they are estimated to be up just slightly compared to fiscal year '25. Permits and fees are down slightly, about $15,000, due to decreased activity to realign with the current trends that we're seeing. This section includes fees collected from recreation and parks, rentals, and associated enrollment in various programs, expected in '26. Fines and penalties are up about $73,000. That's, again, to align with what we're seeing in the trend. Investment earnings and rent are expected to be down due to expected declining short-term interest rates in the new year. Our intergovernmental revenues are revenues coming in from other government agencies and are largely made up of motor vehicle and lieu revenue, which is about $7.3 million of that total of $9.2. And we also have funds from our federal intergovernmental transfer program included in that category as well, which assists with funding of medical, medical transports, ambulance transports of $1.4 million. Charges for services include funding for our ambulance transport fees that we collect, as well as our intergovernmental charges. That's, those are services that are provided by all the support departments to other funds coming back in to recover the cost of that. Those are expected to be down and is reflective of the removal of one-time strike team reimbursements for deployment of staff to assist wildfire support statewide. This is partially offset by increased, our increased intergovernmental charges that funds, support departments, and internal service funds. And we also have an increase in ambulance fees. So it's a combination of all those things making up the total there in that category. Our TOT transfers are $2.3 million, it's just about the same as the prior year, and provide the resources necessary to support service costs in the general fund. The other transfers include funds coming in for costs related to the computer aid dispatch support in the police department. The Measure U transfer, those are funds coming in from the Measure U fund to support the general fund. Measure U revenues are tracked in their own individual fund, and the funds are transferred to where the cost resides. Measure U supports the city in many different ways, which we'll talk about more in this presentation. But the funds coming into the general fund represent funding sufficient to allow existing operations to continue. This increase is based on what is needed in the general fund from Measure U after all general fund revenues and expenditures are taken into consideration. The increase is related to increased salary and benefit costs of having employees, utility and intergovernmental costs, as well as increased, the increased overall cost of just services and supplies. Funds in the designated reserves are generated from either one-time revenues or fees that have been set aside in the past and designated for specific uses. It includes funding coming in to cover the cost of general plan and the turf replacement project. This category is down slightly, just because there is slightly less coming in and appropriated in the new year for those two projects. So again, overall, revenue is up about $1.6 million or 2% over the revised '24, '25 budget. So this is a chart of general fund revenues by type. So again, $80.4 million taxes generate a large portion of the... So this is a chart of general fund revenues by type. So again, 80.4 million taxes generate a large portion of the revenues at about 44%. If you add the Measure U transfer in of 19%, that's a grand total of 63%. Of this total, sales tax, one component of the taxes category makes up about 38% of the overall general fund revenues. Our charges for services are at about 17%. And intergovernmental makes up 12% of the revenues and other smaller categories make up the remainder. Another chart that focuses specifically on tax revenue sector of the prior chart, which makes up about 35.5 million of the $80 million total in general fund revenues. Sales tax is the largest revenue source, generating about 40% of the total tax revenue. Property tax, second largest revenue category, I'm sorry, I have those swapped there. Property tax is slightly higher at 42%. And then some of the smaller categories, property transfer tax, business license, franchise fees, generate the remaining portion of the tax revenues. So now let's switch over and look at expenditure, expenditures in the general fund. General fund expenditures are budgeted at 80.4 million and overall increase of about 1.5 million or 1.9%. The majority of the general fund budget, 80%, supports staffing costs, which are necessary to deliver services to the community and supports approximately 400 full and part-time positions partially allocated to general fund and other funds. Increase in salaries that you're seeing here does include approximately one of the new positions that's budgeted to the general fund. It's actually a combination of both the position in the city attorney's office as well as one in the public works departments that are charged to the general fund. It also includes our routine step advancements, negotiated cost of living adjustments. And it's largely, the reason why you're not seeing a larger increase in that category is because it's offset by decreased overtime for strike team deployments that was one-time and removed in 26. Services and supplies reflect all the supplies and professional contracted services that support the general fund. Their debt's down by about 524,000 or 5.5% and primarily reflects decreases across the board for the removal of one-time costs as well as reduction in services and supplies that are nonessential in an effort to reduce, reduce costs where possible. Investment continues in parks maintenance and includes services such as animal grazing, gopher abatement, tree canopy preservation, weed and landscape maintenance, and janitorial services. Funding for cost recovery activity in the GEMT and IGT ambulance reimbursement program are included and both are directly offset by revenues. Funds are included for long-range planning work and continue to be included. Costs continue to be included for climate-related actions as well as ongoing costs for communications, employee recruitment services, education, and training. Intergovernmental charges are charges supporting the cost of internal service functions such as IT and risk management. This category is down slightly due to a partial rate holiday to all funds for risk management cost allocation. We have reserves in that fund that we do plan on using in fiscal year 26 to fill that gap. Ongoing investment for citywide technology continues with software licenses, cybersecurity, and other technology needs. Our capital costs that are included are slightly down and that is due to the elimination of one-time costs not expected to reoccur in the new year. The 50,000 that you do see there is for an ADA pool chairlift in the Parks and Rec Department. Transfers out include funds for the costs associated with managing the storm drain operations as well as vehicle replacement, ongoing transfer and money for the general plan and our ERP project. This category is up slightly due to transfers out for the projects and the ERP project as well. So again, overall, 1.9% increase over the 2425 revised budget. So general fund expenditures by department, I won't go through every single department here, but in general, the main cost drivers across all departments for the changes that you're seeing here are related to salary and benefit costs, position reallocation changes, increased services and supply, supply costs due to high inflation. And then some of those increases are partially offset by removing one-time costs that are nonrecurring in fiscal year 26. So another way of looking at general fund expenditures, salary and benefits combined make up about 64.2 million or roughly 80% of our overall general fund budget. Services and supplies make up about 9 million, utilities are about 1.4, capital 50,000, and our transfers out at 1.7 million, as well as our intergovernmental at 3.9 million. And here is the final expenditure chart by function. So you can see public safety combined, police and fire is about 69% of the total expenditure budget. General fund support departments, that's city manager, city clerk, city attorney, those type of departments are about 9%. Our public works is about 4%, finance the same about 4%, Parks and Rec 9, and the remaining transfers in planning about 5%. So in summary, we have a balanced fiscal year 26 budget. We, we are remaining grateful to the community for the passage of Measure U, which continues to provide the resources necessary into the future for continuity of services and has also provided us the ability to leverage millions in grant funding and the ability to focus and move forward on many other capital projects and programs and priority initiatives. Our budget is balanced, therefore revenues are equal to expenditures at 80.4 million, each resulting in ending working capital balance of 0%. And as I mentioned, we also have our emergency reserves that are estimated at 14 million at the end of this fiscal year. Our reserve policy that was adopted by council does state that a minimum of 15% should be held in the event of an emergency. And at the end of this fiscal year, we estimate that our reserves will be about 19% of our operating expenditures. And we'll continue to use one-time revenues and our savings to maintain those emergency reserves. So let's talk about the five-year general fund forecast now. It is updated twice per year. It's updated with the budget as well as at mid-year. Given the challenges in the economy, revenue projections remain somewhat conservative due to, due to the uncertainty around a possible recession. Property taxes are included and do show an increase of about 4% in 2526. And we're keeping that consistent next fiscal year to be in line with Sonoma County's estimates, estimates and the duration of the forecast period. Sales tax revenues are expected to slow down slightly due to slowing in the economy in 2526. We have built in a slight increase of a little bit less than 1%. And we are expecting the economy to improve slightly in late 26 and into 27 based on our sales tax consultant's forecast. We are estimating slow to moderate growth in the out years of the forecast. We are continuing to monitor our sales tax closely. And as any changes are noted, that those will come forward to council with the quarterly budget adjustments. Our other revenue categories in our forecast are growing by CPI factor of about 2% to 3% annually. On the expenditure slide, side of the forecast, we have included core staffing and compensation alignments of cost of living adjustments of approximately 3% annually every year in the forecast as planned in our workforce stabilization. We've also included routine step advancements. We're still projecting a 7% escalator on health insurance. This is based on our historical 10-year average increase. We're projecting an 8% growth on our workers' compensation costs. We have made progress this year and in past years towards correcting this trend as it relates to workers', worker compensation costs. But we continue to be slightly underfunded based on our actuarial study that we're required to update annually. We've updated the retirement cost based on the most recent valuation provided by CalPERS. The updated costs do reflect a multi-year increase as a result of PERS reducing the discount rate from 7.5% to 6.8%, which is now fully phased in. The costs that we have factored also reflect ongoing savings from our PERS paydown that we initiated several years ago as well as strong investment returns through fiscal year 23. Does not include any increases resulting from investment losses in the future, which could occur. This is not unique to Petaluma. All participating PERS agencies will be impacted if investment earnings are less than 6.8%. We do receive the updated actuarial reports annually, typically in July, and adjust the forecast as soon as we receive that information. We continue to budget for comp time payouts for separated employees. We've also included 500,000 towards vehicle replacement. This is our only funding mechanism for vehicle replacement, so it is critical that we continue to do so. We also have budgeted transfers out for the stormwater costs included from the general fund. So what's the bottom line? With very careful and precise planning and forecasting, the unassigned ending fund balance at June 30, 2025 is projected to be zero and then begins to increase a bit each year over the duration of the forecast. The proposed fiscal year 26 general fund budget includes our Measure U funding and expenditures, which has resulted in a balanced budget. You can see here that the new funds provided by Measure U are sufficient in the long term to cover essential services. But they also allow for the implementation of various other programs and capital projects you see in the budget. We have significantly leveraged that funding, which has allowed us to maximize the benefit to the community. This result, all of this results in their ending unassigned fund balance at 370,000 fiscal year 31. We will continue to depend on our long-term forecast as we have all through COVID and post-COVID, which has really assisted in proactively addressing any budget shortfalls ahead of any crisis. Since Measure U is maintained in a separate fund, any remaining sources above what is utilized for budgeted expenditures will remain in the Measure U fund and be available for future appropriating. Some of the risks in the long-term forecast, the economy remains challenged. We transitioned from the economy in recovery mode to immediately high inflation with supply chain challenges. In addition, the events occurring around the world could impact the US and the local economy. All of these events do create risks in the near and long term. Retirement costs are included in the out years of the forecast. These costs could escalate depending on what the annual CalPERS actuarial report and assumption show. In addition to the existing retirement cost, PERS investment earnings could fall short of that 6.8% target, which could result in increases that affect not only Petaluma but all PERS agencies. These increases are not included in the forecast as this information will not be known until July of the following year. There could be an overall slowdown in the economy, which would have a direct impact on revenues over and above the impacts factored in. There could be some additional risks here. We are maintaining conservative revenue forecasting due to the uncertainty and will continue to monitor as the year progresses and adjust when necessary. We also have some opportunities. We're continually looking at revenue sources and revising our existing revenues. We're looking at pending development and increasing collection efforts as well as continued effort put towards applying for grant funding. Economic growth and development initiatives continue. Recently passed sales tax measures and future tax measures could bring additional revenue to the city. If and when we learn more about any of those topics, we will be returning back to council for further adjustments. So the bottom line, we have been able to deliver a budget that is balanced. The available resources provided by Measure U allow us to maintain and bolster our existing service levels and meet that demand that the requirement that the community has requested. At June 30, 2025, 14 million reserves available for emergencies will be set aside and will continue to grow with one-time revenues based on council policy. We'll continue to look at revenue generation opportunities as well as focusing our efforts on maintaining our fiscal sustainability, which is essential for guiding us from year to year and into the immediate future. So now we'll switch over to talk about Measure U, investment from inception. So fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 25, this is a breakdown of expenses that speaks to the contributions of Measure U to the eight community priorities. This donut chart shows the total amount of Measure U dollars invested into the city and community from fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 25. The sections in teal show direct investment into road and infrastructure improvements as well as other initiatives like homeless prevention and climate action. The orange sections show that investment in general fund and how they have supported the various city departments and operations, including adding positions to perform essential services. We have been able to significantly leverage this funding and as a result, have been able to add approximately 29 positions in the general fund, spread across all departments, something only possible thanks to Measure U. The addition of staff has a direct impact on the level and quality of services provided to the community. The majority of the positions are in, are in three departments, public safety, public works, and parks and recreation. Overall, 73 to, 73% of Measure U spending, or about 60 million, has gone towards police, fire, and road and infrastructure investment. In the final chart on Measure U, we have had two meetings since last year's budget. The committee just reviewed the proposed budget in April. Measure U revenues are estimated about 15.7 million. General fund support category is about 14.7 million for existing operations and service levels. This is greater than the fiscal year 25. Measure U contribution for, for the general fund by about 1 million and this is due to rising costs across the board. This investment is spread across all departments and services to the community. Infrastructure and priority initiatives that are included, we have funding for roads and public safety facilities and ongoing, our ongoing annual debt service on the road bond, $20 million road bond. Also included is about 650,000 spread amongst those categories that you see there for the LuCasey Turf Field project, project, our continuing fair, free transit program, technology upgrades, and funding for a sidewalk financing pilot program. So that wraps up my slides and I think I'm passing it over to Brian.
Thank you, Cory. Wanted to shift gears a little bit and talk about some of the citywide goals and priorities. Since we are not going through all of the departmental slides today that we would traditionally do, we wanted to highlight a few of these. So on this slide, this is not an exhaustive list, but this is a good selection of some of the projects and significant initiatives that you'll see progress on in the upcoming fiscal year. And the three, the first three there that are in bold, we wanted to provide some additional updates and information and detail on for the council and the community tonight. So we'll talk some more about the zoning code update and the general plan progress. Look at what we have already accomplished with the fairgrounds as well as some exciting things upcoming, as well as the budget for the fairgrounds in the upcoming year. And then we've already had some questions tonight on economic development, but we'll talk through more about what our plan is moving forward for that important initiative. So I think first up, I'll be turning this to Ingrid Alverde, our Director of Economic Development and Open Government, to talk through our economic development strategy.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Just gonna pull up some notes here. Thank you, council. Good evening. Ingrid Alverde with Economic Development and Open Government. Just wanted to highlight, we've been alluding to this tonight, but we are excited and looking forward to a re-energized focus on our economic development efforts, both with a larger multi-department team. team and with just additional focus, both in terms of how we're communicating with our businesses and also how we're operating internally. And just to restate the obvious, I think this entire budget and everything we do contributes to the economic development efforts that we enjoy, both by having a quality, high quality of life in our community with sustainable and strong infrastructure that supports our businesses, as well as housing and development policies that support business growth. So that is a lens that we look through in everything we do. But to focus specifically on the part, on the work that we do that is even above and beyond that, to focus on our economic development is, we're beginning to envision a strategy in the next fiscal year that would pull from the work we did since 2010, but also encapsulate the work that we did with our general plan and the economic development framework that was developed as part of that work. And then finally, adding in the work that we've been doing since the beginning of this fiscal year, where we've been interviewing brokers, property owners, small businesses, working to understand just sort of the current issues, current constraints, and how we can, how we can help Petaluma move forward in terms of additional business growth, additional jobs, and additional revenue to the city. In this framework, we have kind of thinking through nine categories that we are going to be pulling from. To expand this focus, we want to expand the local jobs and provide support to local entrepreneurs. We are currently working on these programs and expanding them. We want to help attract and expand companies, especially focusing on green technologies. We are going to be continuing our efforts with ongoing programs that support local agriculture and associated businesses like food processors and value-added food production. We want to focus on strategies that fill empty office spaces, as well as make our permit program quicker and easier, especially for mom and pop businesses and property owners. We will continue our efforts to expand local housing supply and make sure we have a trained workforce. And one important effort we plan to continue to focus on is around business-to-business activity and sales. If you look at our sales tax reports, you'll note that there has been quite a bit of fluctuation with business-to-business sales, and that can be a very lucrative and important area for our city revenues. And so we'll be focusing on those businesses that contribute in that category and making sure that we have invested in those relationships, understand what those businesses are up to, and what, if anything, we can do to be supporting them before any major decisions are made. And finally, as you've heard tonight, we are planning and will continue to focus on mobility and transit, which is a key area that is needed for our businesses. Sorry, I want to look at you, and I also want to read my notes, and it's not the same glass prescription. So just to kind of focus in a little bit, we've expanded our city team in several ways to provide more focus and energy into economic development than ever before. If I could only have dreamed of having this much support and staff when I was the newly minted economic development manager in 2011, it would have been amazing. One key way we've leveraged Measure U funds to expand our economic development reach is by establishing a community development department, with staff focused on coordinating services, increasing housing supply, adopting a new general plan, and revamping our zoning code. These would have been on my wish list, for sure. These efforts will overcome many of the key impediments to economic development, such as insufficient housing, uncoordinated services, and complex and an inflexible set of zoning codes. But in addition to this amazing community development team that we get to work with, we also have a city manager who's very aware of and focused on economic development and everything our city manager's office does. Our city manager's office provides oversight and decision-making with a strong focus on economic development goals every day. From spearheading our second smart station, assuming management and control of our fairgrounds, leveraging Measure U funds to improve local roads and infrastructure, investing in our downtown, among almost every other decision our team makes, our city manager's office makes economic development a lens by which we all work and make decisions every day. Each of these three departments employs senior management analysts, whose charge is to expand and coordinate our economic development programs. We're actively coordinating permitting, revamping our free-range parklet programs, and improving communication with this expanded team. As we've mentioned, there has been a bit of a focus on how many FTEs, and it was pointed out, if you looked specifically at economic development and open government, it might look like something like 1.3 FTEs. But if you really look at this broader team that is specifically focused on economic development, we see that as closer to 3.5 to 4 FTEs. So in the next fiscal year, specifically with our economic development team, we look forward to expanding our staffing by moving work from our economic development and open government department to other departments to free up time and focus our small but mighty economic development team to re-energize our focus, improve internal coordination, and expand our services, doing what we already know how to do. We have a proven track record of success from the past decade, launching an award-winning marketing program, leading the establishment of the regional business industry groups, building local relationships, retaining key businesses, expanding tourism, and reducing vacancies. We will revamp our marketing program, reestablish our business outreach program, issue regular reports, so the council and community can track our progress, establish a permit concierge service, expand our business education offerings, and start a new business roundtable, where representatives from our businesses can provide insights and feedbacks to inform our ongoing efforts. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague to walk you through how our community development department will also be refocused.
Thanks, Ingrid. Brian O, Director of Community Development. Okay, so this is a good summary, just picking up off the theme of economic development and how it impacts and the amount of investment that comes out of each of the departments. For CDD, one of the primary ways is through our one-stop permit center. And so we are essentially eight months into the literal reconstruction of our permit counter, but also the consolidation and the streamlining of our permit review. And so eight months in, you know, we've come up with, so easy and clear permitting. How do we make sure that, whether it's in coordination with our economic development staff, how do we sit down early and often with prospective businesses, existing contractors that we know? There's essentially only a handful of contractors that do a lot of the work here, and so there is a short list of architects and builders that we regularly engage with. And so making sure early in the process, we're connecting with them. We do what we call the DRC, so it's a development review committee. And so we try to intervene in multiple points within the permit review. And so with improving and making it more easy, more clear, we are helping to generate more economic activity. The business concierge, our economic development director just identified, that is a full suite. So it's some of my time, it's some of our senior management analysts, Jonathan Luong, who you met at the last council meeting with our colleagues, really taking a look at those permits that are in the pipeline and doing some very hyper-focused interventions. For example, so for the first five months year-to-date, we look at our permits in three streams. Those permits that we can issue over the counter, let's say you're changing out a water heater, we can get that done while you're at the counter or within a day of submittal. A one-week review, maybe it's something a little more complicated, so there's a very specific subset of our building permits that building and planning applications that we look at, and we hit that metric of turning that around within a week. And then our standard review, which is 20 business days, 30 calendar days, depending on the type of review. And so five months in for this year, we're essentially 98% on target for permits that get issued the same day or next day. So again, those are the easy ones. Sometimes we have our inspectors that can wear both hats and just, whether it's a quick roof-mounted solar project, we can get those issued within a day. 88% of those one-week turnarounds that we're committing to, you know, 199 have been submitted between January 1st and May of this year, and we've met that metric for 88% of that. So that's something that we always take a look at, how we're doing, what kind of process improvements. And then the ones that we typically hear the most, whether it's Petaluma foodies or just some of the stuff that you may hear from your constituents, are some of those harder standard review, commercial TIs, tenant improvement, so things like the Kentucky Downtown, some of the requests that we're working through with Grand Central, as well as some of the new businesses that are trying to come online along Water Street and the Boulevard. And so that's the one that I'm laser-focused on. So just for an example, we've had 261 permits that have been submitted in that time, 251 of those turned around within. So that means we intake, we have plan review, and then we issue the permit. And so in those five months, that's 10 of those permits that are, again, taking that extra look. And so that's where we sort of set those aside, have a much more focused discussion, sit down, bring the applicant in, the architect, to try to get that, those types of projects moving forward as quick as possible. And so that first line there is our focus on one-stop permit center. And then the second line of items, Ingrid touched on this as well, general plan and zoning code update. We need to have a zoning code that, it's been two iterations, 20-plus years, we've done some light touches, but we need a zoning code that is cheaper to interpret and administer and much more flexible and business-friendly. And so that's something that we've touched on in this meeting and in previous meetings. And so we're really looking forward to getting that off the ground. General plan, we're about a year off, so we'll be back here June 16th to finalize our land use discussion. And so we are looking forward to hitting that milestone so that we can come back to council late summer, early fall for the adoption of a general plan. That takes us into 2050. The council also, as well as the community, has spent a lot of time and focus over the last couple of years on the downtown housing and economic overlay. That is an opportunity that we're looking forward to fully realizing with projects such as the EKN Hotel. So that's a project that is currently under project review, and so we're looking to get that in front of Planning Commission and our Historic Cultural Preservation Committee shortly. And then that third batch, it says pre-approved ADUs. It's just, that's one example, but this is really about housing for all. Again, so one of the strategies around economic development and community development is how are we providing the much-needed housing for our community? And so strategies like making it faster, cheaper to build ADUs is one strategy that we're looking at. We also have a, we'll be talking about this next Monday, but a non-general fund reliant housing budget that we're really excited about. We are doing almost $8 million, I believe, in this next year through some of the really great work of staff to get us some state money to help address some of our strategies around ending homelessness in the city of Petaluma. And then to round all that out is public art, historic preservation. These are all elements that, whether we address them in the zoning code or, you know, through specific projects, these are the things that are tangible, these are the things that we see, it's our historic resources downtown, it's the murals along Lynch Creek that make it a much more safe and approachable option to get around town. And then closing out with mobility and transit, again, we've talked a lot about how we get around town and this idea of how we can create a 15-minute city here for Petaluma. I know we can do it, whether it's through the general plan or building up towards the vision that the general plan has, whether it's through building more active transportation throughout town. And so, again, really exciting year. We're getting ready, very close also to bring a senior planner online. And so we're sort of in the final stages there, and that will help us have a good approach to the number of long-range projects that we have upcoming this fiscal year. And with that, turn it over to Drew.
Hello. Good evening. Drew Halter, Director of Parks and Recreation, and I have the pleasure of going through the Petaluma Fairgrounds. We'll also be talking about the upcoming 2025 fair event itself, and then I'll pass it off to Kat Reisinger, our Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, to give you a high-level overview of the Luma Ice Event. So all things fair and fairgrounds, and we'll get it going. So a strong community thrives when spaces are not just places to meet, but places to connect, to feel safe, and to create shared memories. The ability for a space to adapt and welcome diverse needs makes it a community hub, and that's what we're going to be really talking about here now, and that's been our focus over the last year. So in its first full year of managing its fairgrounds, this image here kind of represents how we approach that. Our focus has centered on maintaining the interim uses and tenants, one of the critical pillars there, addressing immediate infrastructure needs to ensure public safety, piloting new uses, and activating community events, and ensuring the annual fair. So tonight's presentation will include, again, a recap of this past year, including some of the costs for the major events. We'll do an overview of the infrastructure investments and property management, and happy to answer any questions. Next slide, please. So it's important, much like many of the representatives in this room, it really does take a village to run a fairgrounds, and in this case, a city. So with major repairs, it is no secret, the property has long suffered some decades of disinvestment. And so for the major repairs at the property, a few highlighted here, these largely are daily, weekly, monthly coordination between Public Works, utilities, our water utilities folks, economic development in a lot of cases, Parks and Recreation. So it really does run the gamut from any other building or grounds and maintenance. The sewer pump station HVAC units were replaced. Several unsafe buildings were demoed, a few more will be demoed to make sure the property is safe for public use. A lot of minor electrical, but also electrical mapping is undertaken to make sure that we've got facilities that we can use safely. Pathways and grounds, making sure that we can navigate the 55 acres successfully and create, you know, good areas for high-traffic events. And water and sewer utilities were a big focus this last year. What's really benefited the city is we've worked closely with the property manager on facilitating a lot of the minor repairs for the nine existing site license or tenants of the property. This has been crucial to allow us to focus on some of the community areas. But again, daily, weekly, monthly coordination between our property manager really helps us create really good relationships with not just the tenants, but communication throughout, which really is part of our team. Again, by no means is this an expansive list, but it's just important to show you the breadth of repairs underway. Next slide, please. So staff remain committed to implementing the work detailed essentially through the Democracy Now!, Citizen Advisory Panel and the Community Outreach Possi- Process that gave us the eight guiding principles, which were then adopted by the City Council. These principles really guide us through decision-making process when we approach special events, programming, and even weighing capital, minor and major facility repairs. We're always keeping a long range plan on the, the Fairgrounds master plan while looking at those guiding principles as the lens for which we evaluate programming. So re-engaging continuously with the community was one of the central pillars. We're a host site to a lot of community outreach events. We're really trying to get new and diverse groups onto the property and asking them and engaging with them and beginning the conversation on helping to understand what are the constraints and what could be at the site. Fostering local partnerships, bringing in new uses like the vintage markets, talking with farmers markets, ensuring continuity of some of the major events like the Petaluma Musical Festival, the annual fair, the spring break carnivals, car shows, circuses, et cetera. Celebrating Petaluma's agricultural legacy, working closely with the, one of the tenants that remains on the property, the, the Fourth District Agricultural Association, Ag Days, also a partner for the annual fair. Promoting safety, inclusivity and accessibility through facility upgrades, attracting new uses. Supporting emergency preparedness has been a really focus of ours as well, as we get to understand the property and make improvements to make it not just safer, but more resilient when we do need to activate as an evacuation shelter or a resiliency center. And ultimately maximizing use for community needs. That's really Parks and Recreation's bread and butter. And the images here kind of show you a variety of those uses from the Big Bounce event to the judo that's been really popular, ballet for glow eco, wrestling clubs, Petaluma cheer, pickleball pilot uses. These are all kind of examples of, of our commitment to activate the property. Next slide, please. So the twenty twenty-five annual Petaluma Fair, yes, it's happening. It should be no surprise. We are working on it. I bet you everyone in this room is touching it in some degree. What's been really exciting is we've, we've taken this on and leaned into it, true to our kind of spirit and in our cultural organization is in a collaborative way. This is too big of an event, too important of an event to really rest on anyone's shoulder. When we do our best work, we're collaborating and that's really how we're approaching this event. So it's been remarkable to organize the city on our strong suit. So we're split into programming sections, entertainment sections, operations, logistics, security and safety, planning, transportation, finance, risk assessment, communications. We're really split and dividing this event into a lot of those subtasks and going out and leaning into this event. So again, if you don't have it on your calendars, June nineteenth through the twenty-second, eleven AM to eleven PM. And we are partnering with the Fourth District Agricultural Association. Again, they will be hosting the agricultural portion of the fair, which we're excited about. And then we get to everything else, which will deliver those kind of quintessential fair experiences like your fair food, your carnival rides, your exhibits, your live music. But we'll always have to kind of Petalumaize everything we do. So we're looking forward to incorporating a little bit of our Petaluma flair to the fair. What do you think? Okay. I do want to forewarn everyone, there will be a dunk tank and active needs of prized participants. And you all as elected officials have taken an oath. And you're also easy targets for, so you've been warned. Okay, next slide, please. In the next two slides, we'll talk one about the twenty-six fairgrounds proposed revenues or anticipated revenues. And the next slide will be the fairgrounds budget. So as you see here, fairgrounds maintenance is slated at four hundred and fifty-four thousand. Is that right? Oh, there we go. Next slide. Yeah, there we go. About thirty percent. The annual fair is that large expenditure. But again, we are budgeting revenues to offset costs of about one point four million. So you'll see the two numbers, but just remember that. One point five eight is our anticipated expenditures, one million being the fair, hundred and twenty-three thousand being special events, largely attributed to position as a recreation special event coordinator that's going to be bringing on events, which is important. And then the fairgrounds maintenance, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, about thirty percent. So from expenditures, we'll go to revenues where you'll see that annual fair is expected to offset at six hundred thousand. We anticipate bringing in about a hundred and ninety-five thousand in additional special events revenue and expect our lease tenant revenue at roughly six hundred and thirty thousand. Thank you. And at this point, we'll bring in Kat to talk Luma Ice.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kat Reisinger, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation, and I am really excited to be here tonight to talk to you all about Luma Ice. Was very fortunate to have risen my hand, maybe July or August. Didn't know what I was signing up for, but it was awesome. And we learned so many things that I don't think we would have been prepared to do the fair at the level of which we are currently doing the fair if we hadn't have done the Luma Ice experience. Lots of lessons learned and I will never forget that weekend we opened, which was the torrential rainstorm where there's tornadoes, I think, in Santa Cruz. And I remember watching the Java Hut people drive by while I'm trying to hold the fence up and the porta potties are blowing over and Peggy's running over with a sandbag. But it was wonderful and it was fantastic. And I'm here to talk more about it. Next slide, please. Our Luma Ice objectives, we went into this very knowingly that we wanted to follow the guiding principles that were outlined from the community. More specifically, we wanted to create welcoming, accessible and inclusive environment for the community play while engaging our stakeholders and enhancing community partnerships. What was really amazing about Luma Ice is you didn't have to be an ice skater to be able to participate. We wanted to explore something new and exciting while building a foundation for sustainable annual programming that uniquely attracts more visitors to Petaluma. A fun fact, sixty-three percent of the tickets that were sold in advance because we're able to track them were people who have not been in our registration system before. So we can pretend or assume they are brand new users to our experiences. Next slide, please. Real quick programming overview. It was open from December thirteenth to January seventh for twenty-six days. That's three hundred and twelve hours of operation. We sold a grand total of eleven thousand four hundred and forty-three tickets. There were nine gliding gift events. That's nonprofit fundraising night, school field trips, music, food, and a New Year's Safe Skate Program. Next slide. General ticketing overview. Again, you can see our sales breakdown here. One thing that we did specifically is really go into Luma Ice with an idea to be able to pull out metrics and be able to evaluate where are people coming? How are they using the grounds? Weekend's good, ten AM, four PM. What are we really, really interested in using information so that we can plan out future programming for? I'd also like to highlight that we did have sixty-six percent of Petaluma residents, which is awesome. But we had the other forty-four percent math. I'm not a math person. I'm in Parks and Rec. Is non-Petaluma area individuals, which we can assume are people coming in to buy a Diet Coke or hot chocolate or buying gas, helping stimulate our economy as well. Go ahead, Brian. Thank you. This is just an interesting chart. I like to see we analyzed kind of, you know, the trends of what were, what were the most popular days. Not surprisingly for us, it was really right before the Christmas holiday. Although I do want to highlight that we opened on a Friday and we had school the following week and had a very, very well received school field trip experience. Next slide, please. Community access. The community access, it's essential when piloting programs such as Luma Ice. It can reflect our city's mission to serve all the residents and activate public spaces for our broad benefit. It's not just for revenue. Offering affordable programming, it ensures inclusivity while providing fundraising opportunities in new spaces like the ice rink. It helps support schools and nonprofits. These efforts also build trust and foster community pride and show that how places like the fairgrounds and literally a parking lot can turn into a really fun and year-round experience for your entire community. Next slide, please. This was the budget breakdown. As you can see, that we have a net of three hundred and twenty-six thousand. As you saw from our proposed fairgrounds budget, this year's fair is estimated to have a net cost of four hundred thousand for that four day event. This was a twenty-six day event. Conversely, Luma Ice event had a net cost of three hundred and twenty-six thousand for this twenty-five day event. The net cost of Luma Ice was funded by the TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax. This first year has provided us with a really great foundation for the prioritization of this upcoming year and being able to evaluate our programming. We are going to return back to council following the results of our inaugural fair. And we're going to have a recommendation on programming, including Luma Ice for the remainder of the year. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of our large groups. I had mentioned that we had a successful first week being open during field trips, which was a risk. We weren't sure that we should be open when essentially school is in session, but as you can see, with six hundred and thirty school field trip users, that's anyone using the ice rink before four PM that day was very well received. We also found that our four PM time slot was our most popular sold out time slot. We also got to experience different types of large groups such as the Girl Scouts coming of fundraising hockey night, different youth experiences and lessons were really popular towards the end of the experience. Next slide. I do want to take a second to highlight that it was more than just an ice rink. Having that tent at the end of the fairgrounds parking lot was instrumental for being able to pilot other uses. We were able to house the Girl Scout cookies, very popular, as you can see in the bottom left photo. We were able to host the Food Not Fentanyl event. We were co-sponsor along with Sax's joint and Micah's hugs where they fundraised fourteen thousand dollars to the Fentanyl Crisis Awareness Group. Lumago, we partnered with one of the site licensed tenants, tenants to do midnight glow ball, super fun. Girl Scout trees. I could talk all day. Next slide, please. Keep programmatic takeaways, just a few high level points. As we mentioned, it was going to be very important for us to analyze the successes and the lessons learned from the experience. What I loved that this was, and we heard on multiple individuals from all different parts of community, not just in Petaluma, but in all of Marin and Sonoma counties, that this was a location that teens could go to, where they knew, parents knew that they could be safe, they could participate in an affordable activity and they could hang out and just be teens, which was really fun. Everyone loved the fairgrounds location. We had heard there might be some concern about being in the parking lot. Once it was up, we didn't hear a single complaint. Sponsorship was awesome. This for next year in two thousand twenty-six, the Parks and Recreation Department, we've been invited to participate in the California Parks and Recreation Society Annual Conference as a speaker on our experience for the Luma Ice and lessons learned, if you will. We've also been in very close conversations with the city of Hercules and the town of Corte Madera, who want to know everything of, hey, how did it go? What should we learn? We want to do it with you too. Also another point that we didn't quite realize going into it, but it was very successful and fun for all of our part-time staff who were able to work. We had over seventy people who worked for the part-time during the holidays and it was awesome just to be able to be there with Petaluma residents. We had young, old, retired. Some of my favorite individuals were individuals who came from People's Village and they came to work in the community in the parking lot and it was absolutely fantastic. And we look forward to working with them again, hopefully for the fair. And I think that's my last slide. Pass it back to you guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kat and everybody for sharing those updates. And I think we can wrap up here. Just wanted to reiterate Peggy's acknowledgements of the huge team effort that it is to put together this budget every year. Just acknowledging our entire finance staff, the department representatives who help within their departments to put together the budgets. And thank you, Mayor and council members for your support of our annual fiscal year budgeting program. So with that, I think we will conclude and take any questions on any of the sections that you just heard.
Fabulous, fabulous. Amount of detail, I think Lumago was, Luma Ice was one of the highlights of the year and well worth it at that investment just for breaking door, down the door to the fairgrounds and the benefit to the people. With that, I'd like to open public comment. And not seeing anyone making their path forward, then we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for questions of staff, comments. Vice Mayor.
Well, thank you, staff, for all your hard work. I do have some questions. Let's start back with community development. Can we have a breakdown of what in-house staff costs versus an outsourced staff? I'm very happy to hear that we're getting a senior planner, but you don't have to give it to us tonight because it'll probably be intensive because I know that there's a lot of layers to an in-house staff.
Well, actually, back up to slide nineteen, there was a little bit of breakdown on that slide that Jesse went through at the beginning. So
But is that with all the the community wants to know what it would take to have it back in the in-house planning department? And I know there's a lot of expenses with salaries and that would be I'm sorry.
Sorry, now it's like a hundred slides back.
Because that doesn't, well, it does have some benefits, but it's not a real breakdown.
Yeah, so the, the, the two categories, the, the red on the bottom and the burgundy on the left, those are the contracted planning services. The one on the, the burgundy is the cost recovery where there's a developer that's, has a development application, they're paying those costs. And then the red is anything else, planning related, that isn't directly funded by a development application. So those are the contracted planning staff categories within the planning budget.
And Vice Mayor, so we did the calculation when this was, when this last came. We also did a quick verification. It's roughly, it'd take roughly twenty-four percent more with the current setup to bring it in-house. The other component to this is as we've committed the contract services, so we'll be doing an RFP next year. And so we're, we're making our, we're doing the prep work for that to happen. But those are the two big highlights. You have the breakdown in cost recovery versus general fund. Again, a lot of it is, you know, whether, the only one that's not up here is the enterprise fund. So when a building permit comes in, we do a review that gets routed to our planning staff and they're providing the overview of our zoning code, et cetera. So those are the two key things, twenty-five percent to bring it in-house and then we're looking at doing the RFP as we've committed to do next year.
And the other thing that, when people's put their application in for, let's say, a sunroom, there, is there a timeline to when they should be getting where cities should be getting back to them on that permit? You know, there's lots of layers to, you know, the departments, but these are residents who maybe have an aging home and they are taking it personal. They, they think they've done something wrong and they're emotional and they reach out to council members. And so I was like, is there a way to say, okay, if it's a water heater, it might only take twenty-four hours. But if it's a sunroom, we have to go to these various departments. We have to have these various, you know, punch lists checked off before we can issue that permit. It might take up to six months.
Great example. So in an ideal world, we get in front of the homeowner, in this case, the architect, there's, there's a contractor representing the homeowner. And so in an ideal world, we do that before the permit is submitted, so we try our best to get in front of people then, but as soon as that permit gets, so that was a building permit that got submitted, as soon as that gets submitted, our permit texts do a Q A, Q C, make sure that everything is there before it gets routed to plan review, so that a typical review, the number that I had reported earlier, twenty business days, so essentially one month to complete review. And that actually, depending on the need, and so as Corey had mentioned earlier, we are expecting the permit revenue to be fairly steady. It's something that we experienced during the last five years, so we expect it to continue. We have contract services for plan review as well, and so we're able to meter if there's an uptick in any given week. We have three consulting groups under contract, familiar with building code, and they're able to turn those around with the metrics that we've identified. And so a lot of that is just, you know, making sure that we're connecting, picking up the phone, and trying to clearly outline those steps that are needed. And in that case, I think it was a sunroom converted to expansion of some of their interior, right? So I think that was, that specific one was, that could have just been a quick conversation just to clarify the scope of the work, and that would have put it on a much cleaner path, and so we're trying to make those process improvements.
So it had nothing to do with whether or not we outsource our planning department?
No.
Or we have an in-house?
Zero.
I think that's where a lot of the miscommunication happens and the finger-pointing starts, and I was on council when we had an in-house, and we had just as many complaints. So thank you for breaking that down. I'm, I'm sorry, I really, I wanted a line for line, and you gave me a pie chart, so I'm not an accountant, but that is very helpful. To community development, I'll turn, Ingrid, thank you very much for your presentation. Are we missing out on tax, sales tax revenue with not having big boxes, warehouses, appliance-type stores like Best Buy or Home Depot, or are we missing out?
I'll, I'll speak to that based on the data I have. We haven't updated our data in a while, but we did do a leakage study about a decade ago, which identified appliances as being a key area of leakage. We did try to bring appliances into town through Freedmans, which was unsuccessful, and I think certainly if we had a big box like a Home Depot that would sell appliances, that would be a net sales positive for the city, and I think the city's always balancing sales tax revenues with quality of life and sort of our downtown development. So certainly, we could, we could, we could capture more in appliances. I think the retail sales category is really moved more to online, and, you know, the good news there is that we do participate in online sales. The bad news is it goes through a county pool, and there's some debate as to whether or not we get our whole fair share of that. And then, yeah, thirdly, I think the area of cars is an area where we benefited by having car dealerships, and we are losing some market share with car dealerships. We do currently have an empty lot. We, you know, the car, the car business has changed quite a bit, moving towards electric vehicles and makes and models that we actually don't have in town, so we will be revamping efforts to do very proactive outreach in that area to see if we can attract either used car sales or new car sales in, in some of these areas, like maybe some of the E V, the newer E V vehicles aren't even doing standard dealerships anymore, so trying to figure out how we can benefit in, in those market areas.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
That really helps a lot. And for the Luma Ice and the fairgrounds, I thank Drew and Kat for putting in so much time and effort, and I love the energy, but I would like to have maybe given to all the council those slides that you showed. Can we have them printed out? Yeah, I was trying to take notes very fast, but there, it's a very important part as we go into the fair master planning, the fairgrounds' master planning, and as we talk to community members who are worried about, you know, where our finances are being spent. But Luma Ice was priceless. You can't, you can't put a price tag on that, and the memories it made. Unfortunately, I got sick the month of December and didn't go out in public, but my family and friends all had a wonderful time, and I, I thank all the energy that, I don't think you slept for a month, Kat, and I thank you for that energy. It's priceless, so that's...
And can I ask, this presentation, like all presentations, will be on the website ASAP, and, yeah. I know you were crafting it right up to the moment of presentation, but...
I, I would love to have a pen. It's so much nicer to go out in the garden and read this than to take my iPad. That's just my, I know we're trying to save paper, but thank you.
I do like printing the section that I need rather than the whole of it, but Councilmember Barnacle.
Yeah. Thank you for the additional detail on those items, for sure. It really helps. So on the, the fairgrounds tenant budget, does that include Live Oak vacating the premises? The, the budget that we, that we show with the different revenues? Just want to make sure.
I want to make sure that we get this right. My understanding is that it does, but if Jesse could confirm revenues...
I think what, what's in there right now is assuming that Live Oak continues to remain on the property, but what's also not in there is the cost to support Live Oak. So kind of our initial review over the first year is that we're netting about forty-nine thousand with Live Oak being on the property, once you take their rent and subtract the cost to support them as a tenant. And we're, again, we left that study for this fiscal year, but we're going to keep paying close attention because we, we think that once Live Oak has vacated the premises, it'll expand our ability to use the site. That's been a huge limiting factor in terms of protecting the kids. They're not on a, they're not on a campus that has any kind of protection, so sort of how we operate the gates, who's on site, when they're on site, how we coordinate those uses, has, has created a lot of limits for Kat's team in terms of how we use the property. So we actually think that it'll probably be a net neutral impact this coming year, but we'll, we'll, we'll keep paying attention to that.
Okay. Thanks. Curious if we know the net cost of the Fourth of July event? I appreciated the comparison to the, to the fair from Luma Ice. I would also, I'm just, I can't imagine what, you know, thirty minutes of fireworks costs us.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the event that we have proposed and successfully done, which is the high elevation, where the fairgrounds remains closed, we shoot between six and eight thousand feet and allow spectators to enjoy it. That model for event costs roughly about forty thousand dollars for the, for the fireworks, the material, the staging. What's not incurred in those costs is any additional, you know, effects of public safety that may have to patrol the sites, some overtime that we do to close, kind of with drive before the shoot, so non-operation staff coverage, but just to run that event, the projectiles, the equipment is about forty thousand.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you. So I really appreciated all the discussion about the different, the sort of three different categories of zoning. Brian, that was great. I'll say the, I'm really excited about the A D U policy coming forward for for sale, and it's a great opportunity to increase sales tax and provide missing middle housing. On the zoning code, I think something that we struggle with as council people is when a business owner calls us, and they say, well, I can't do this because of this, and we're like, yeah, that sounds like a stupid rule, right? And it would, it's doesn't, it's not enough for us to say that's a stupid rule. We know we're working on it. Like, it would be really helpful to have, like, a list of the stupid rules that we're planning to take on when we update our zoning code, right? Because it would make me feel like I don't have to, like, dig under the hood of every single thing that's going on so that I can actually be like an advocate from up here for what I'm hearing from the community. And so I appreciated the, you know, it's costly to administer, it's, you know, it's costly to go through the process for businesses, and so I, I appreciate that, that framing, and I would just say, like, the more specifics we can get on those things, the better we'll be at, like, running, running guard out in the community and asking for patience and saying, we're working on it, like, this is clearly a priority, so I would really like some, like, real specifics on that stuff, so, and places where I know I can land things, too, when I hear about them, right? The, the other area, I asked a question about comms. I really, I love all the things we're doing with comms. One, Petaluma's amazing. The business spotlights and the community member spotlights on social media is great for vibes, and at the same time, like, I feel like we're getting roasted on, like, the tough, sticky things that people don't understand, which is like economics and land use economics and city finances and things like that. Look at how many people are here trying to understand, like, the most important policy document that the city has, right? But they're happy to pack something to oppose a tall building, right? And, and so I just, like, I gotta say that we've, like, the, the comms opportunity for us is moving away from, like, awareness and vibes and really trying to dig, like, like, really get, like, move people toward understanding. I think Urban Chat and Know Before You Grow does an amazing job of providing educational content, and they get roasted for it. I think we've got to look at who our messengers are, you know, some of the people in the community. I really appreciate the letter from our police and our fire union in support of the hotel because they know what it's like to be underfunded, and they know how important it is to have a well-funded city and financially strong city. My mother-in-law's in town, so my wife broke her shoulder. City of Palo Alto's general fund is a hundred million dollars, and they're, you know, basically the same size as us. And so, I mean, we're talking, other cities have a much stronger financial, like, picture because of, you know, what, you know, the, what they've done, and I think when it comes to housing, when it comes to economic development, comms has just such a critical role to play in getting people to, moving them from like, like, oh, my God, I'm reactionary to this image that I see and to the stuff that I'm reading on, you know, social media, to understanding, like, why we need this stuff. You know, some of the things that, when I look at the cost of the in-house planners and the contract planners and things, what I don't see is the variability of our cost recovery account, and I think that's important, especially as we look at uncertain economic times. So I'd love to see something on that when it comes back. And, and then, you know, again, I'm really excited to see after the fair, a pre, like, a more of an engagement around the fairgrounds. I loved Luma Ice, and at the same time, I didn't know it was coming. And like, there's certain things, like, in the general fund budget that are in there, like, I asked a question about Lumago and the fair free transit because that's funded out of the general fund, and those are things that, like, if we don't, if you don't know to ask about them in here, they fly under the radar through the budget, and then they happen, and then the community's asking, what the hell happened here? Why are we doing this? And that's an opportunity, like, I'm really happy that we talked about the fairgrounds tonight, talked, we talked about economic development. Those other things that are coming throughout the year, I'd love to have those detailed in the final budget. Things like Lumago, like, have it spelled out in there, and because I want to be able to point to the budget and say, see, it was there, and not like, I didn't know it was coming, isn't it cool, though? And so, you know, again, I'm, I'm excited about the budget. I agree with Councilmember Shribbs that we're, you know, in a much better position than some of our colleagues are, you know, peer cities, and appreciate all the work that goes into all this stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shribbs.
Okay, thank you. Again, Luma Ice, very supportive. I was there, supporting it. It was beautiful to watch. So now, so we have that last year's analysis on financing. What about next year and the year after? Because a lot of that cost may be just the first-time cost of setup, and is it possible we could actually make a profit in the next couple of years, once we get more people there and that we're reusing the equipment we originally bought? So can we turn it into a profitable business within the next two years?
I'm just going to weigh in, and staff, tell me if I'm, I'm missing mark. So we would, we would be able to, we definitely learned a lot, so we have some efficiencies that we definitely can apply if we do it again this year, but I think it's going to be really important. I mean, to your point, Councilmember Barnacle, when we took over a, a little over a year ago, you know, we made some commitments, right? We made commitments to pilot programs and, and events, and we said that we were going to keep the annual fair. It wasn't clear if the D A. was going to continue. We had to hit the ground running with emergency repairs, so we did a lot of things kind of on the fly because we were trying to catch up a little bit. So no surprises this year. We will come back after the fair and report out on how we did on the fair, and ideally we can reduce that four hundred thousand dollar hit and, and make, make more money than we had planned, but like every other Parks and Rec offering, I would say we never go into it making money. If we can get to revenue neutral, I think that would be a wonderful goal, and obviously, you know, for our event planning, that we hope that we can start to generate some revenue to put back into Luma Ice and, and the fair.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that recap, and couldn't have said that better. A few more specifics. We definitely identified within the trends where we can really reduce and tighten up a lot of our spending that we weren't aware of, such as staffing. We had intentionally overstaffed, thinking that there might be safety concerns with the parking or areas where it's really busy on a Saturday night, and we actually didn't need as much staff, and at the same time that we had committed to hiring and paying some of those during the holiday season, so we couldn't just let all of them go, if you will, but this next year, we've already analyzed everything very much so, so that we won't have that challenge as well as we've, now that we know so much more about it, we can do a lot better job of doing preemptive planning in the future, a lot more lessons, a lot more high-revenue generating items like the private events, the school field trips, and really doing a lot better job of kind of marketing from lessons learned. The other really big support will be some infrastructure support. A lot of emergency costs came up with being in that fairgrounds part, that we just hadn't identified, that we didn't know the power pole would need some extra love during the big season, and we, thank goodness, the city manager said, let's get a backup generator just in case, and we ended up running the entire event on the backup generator. So we definitely know things way more than we could have anticipated beforehand, so a lot of tightening up as well as additional revenue generating opportunities.
So does that mean we're going to have it again next year?
That has not necessarily been decided. It's my understanding that we, after the fair, are going to do an analysis of all of our programming and then come back to the council, but I...
Good. That's what I want to find out, the, the future. Okay, good. Then moving over to housing, so I went to, was at a seminar last couple few weeks, and there was a researcher on housing, and one of the things he was saying is that, yes, A D Us are wonderful, however, the volume is not going to be enough to, to get to where we need to be to meet state requirements, and that large apartment complexes and the like, or even condos are, are really nice, but it takes so long to get them in place that they're also are not going to give us the volume. And he said, from an economic point of view, to get to the volume, he says, that's the middle market that we're really missing and that was really needed, that nobody's, not enough people and not enough cities are paying attention to. So can we give more attention to that middle market? And he was referring specifically to...
I think you're referring to next week's agenda, which is a housing element, right? Do we have that?
Right.
Can we put that on the docket for next week?
Good. So in preparation, so can we put some emphasis on that middle housing next week?
Yes, we have, I mean, that is where the big focus is, missing middle housing, missing middle income housing, that sweet spot between two on a... That sweet spot between two on a lot upwards to 16 on a lot. There's a lot of strategies around that. So we can talk more about that next week or.
That's fine. As long as we get to the, how are we gonna get to the, the two, four, six plexes on single family homes, those type things, that area. All right, good. That was a question on housing. Then going to just like the, the budget for the, for the council. I know that we have a little bit of a budget that for our benefits and the like. But so I'm still going out and spending my personal money on just even, I have several meetings I go every month. And each one is in a different city. And so when I'm driving there, there's, there's costs involved. And then if I'm paying for my own meals or coffees and things with folks, there's a few costs. So it's just a, it's small amounts. It's just a thousand or 2,000 a year. But it's, but it's coming out of my personal pocket as, as I'm doing city business. So. Is there any possibility we can actually shift gears around how we support the council members up here? So that we actually have some budget to either to subsidize our travel and meals when we're doing city business. Because right now I think the policies we have to travel 50 miles to, to apply for to getting compensated. Can we change that down to 10 miles or even. If we're having constituents with meals here in town that we have to pay for ourselves, but that we're not allowed to let them pay for us. So can, can we actually have, have some compensation in some way that we could put that in our budget to start?
Yeah, thank you, councilmember shrubs. So the policy that you're referring to was reapproved, I think relatively recently, I want to say about two years ago, but that's not to say that we can't look at it again. So we could, we could look at that and see if there's a change that, that could. You know, increase the reimbursements, but we have to make sure that we're abiding by IRS law and whatever state laws may, you know, generate or may govern gifting, et cetera. So. I think Jesse's trying to get my attention to correct what I just said.
Over the monitor. We, the city attorney's office actually brought an update to the council reimbursement policy just in August and it was approved by council. So.
So much less than two years ago.
Much less than two years. Now that doesn't mean we can't reopen it and take another look, but I did just want to point out that this was a fairly recent update.
Yeah, because I was used to it when I was selling for, for a large industry company. As a salesperson, I could just hold on all my receipts, turn everything in and get reimbursed that way. So it's not a salary, it's just reimbursement for costs for doing business. So that's different from IR, not include an IRS type situation. So that's what I'm referring to is.
And I, I think the main constraint is that 50 mile radius. So once you're outside 50 miles, you're sort of officially traveling for city business. And if you're inside that. Radius, then you're not theoretically under the policy. So we, we can take a look at that as Jesse said and.
Cause I'm traveling like 20 miles to 40 miles to other cities right now.
Right.
To, to go to these meetings and conferences and workshops and the like. So yeah, and it, so it cost me 20 to $30 in gas there and back. And then I have to pay for my own meal or even some of those pay for the own conference out of my pocket. So that's, that's what I'm, I'm looking forward to. Cause if we have other folks up here, we want to encourage folks that may not be in retirees with enough money. Like for me, yeah, I'm retired. I have enough. Still have enough income coming in that I, yeah, it's not that big of a deal for me, but.
It's a good idea. What they could under consideration. I did want to weigh in on a, on a variety of things. One, I supported councilman barnacles. Comments that we don't make whether to consult or contract out work. We don't make that decision strictly on an economic basis. It's a, a needs basis, whether the expertise is the issue. Or whether the volume of work or the seasonality, much as I expressed my concern about adding regular employees to, to the budget if we weren't going to stay. At that level of effort. It's, it's better to have a consultant. That decision is that way and, and so it's not strictly economic. And the fairgrounds and, and Luma Ice, and those are not strictly, those are bringing back resurrecting advertising, economic development. That has a different cost to benefit ratio going on. And, and I appreciate you saying that the first year learning curve, a little extra expense and. Other years will be tighter. But and, and I do appreciate economic development saying regular reports. That's a, a key thing for us. Metrics would actually be a lot of fun. Kind of wondering like offline, if I ask in the new world of what economic development means. What can the city do at Plaza Shopping Center? I'm thinking appliances, but all, all commercial effort. What can be done at, at Washington Square where there's vacancies or turnovers and, and what can we do to be either. The encourager or the scold to, to say this isn't good to have an empty space. I mean, we've visited about this in a downtown area. But our economic development need, our revenue need is such that. I think the council is asking for more proactive on every level of recruitment, be they commercial or other industrial that, you know, we don't see as front and center. We don't. We go to a shopping center, we notice. We don't drive through an industrial park and notice really whether the parking lot's full or empty and, and business is. Helping pay for parks, helping pay for everything else we do. On the sidewalk replacement program. Was that a proposal? Is that in the budget? What are we talking here?
That's currently in the budget and our director, Paul Koschel, can speak to that pilot program, what that looks like.
So I love the pilot program and love more details. Is it in, is it in the capital budget sheet? I can find the sheet for it.
Not set up as a capital sheet, but it is listed. It was included in our operating budget. To initiate or launch our pilot program. Like as a grant program similar to the, I believe the sewer lateral program that the city has. So 70,000 gets us started. I think like a lot of our programs, the need is much greater than the budget allows right now. So, but this would allow us to address some of the backlog of sidewalk issues that, that we've received through complaint process. One of the things that we're also hoping to do in this year, if, if this portion of the budget is approved, is do a citywide assessment. Right now it's all.
There goes $70,000.
Yeah, so we've been talking, we've been exploring options to at least go out there and identify what the needs are so that we can develop a multi-year program. And be a little bit more proactive in addressing the sidewalk issues because we've heard it at, you know, through the discussion at the active transportation. Plan. We've also heard it at the prior committee meetings during the transit committee as well as feedback. And so I think part of what we're talking about is we want to better understand the need. So that we can develop a more holistic program so we can tackle those, those sidewalk issues.
So you've heard it from me for three or four years and not you, you, but you, you. And so. I would like to see us take a much more aggressive and I, position. And I think that's the priority decisions we're saying in the rest of the budget. We're saying, oh, are we gonna put money in the museum? Are we gonna put it into sidewalks? Or are we gonna put it into, you know, we're gonna have to look through this. I mean, it's been a great presentation this evening. But I think the takeaway for the council is to look down the line items and say, where do we disagree? Where do we have preferences that are different and give staff that feedback and, and then learn why it has to be the way, no. And, and then learn where the negotiating can be amongst priorities. But I for one would like to see that happen in a much more aggressive way. I find too many of our things, we're very careful about having the right participation and the right plan and the achievement is several years out. I would love to lead with a few softs and maybe errant or underwhelming. Utilization, addressing the problem and then get real feedback rather than blind conjecture. So I would hope for and, and advocate in our next discussion.
And I would just say that this time, because we've had money earmarked in previous budgets, but we haven't had a champion. And our staff actually outlined a pretty thorough program. So that's 70,000 is going to go directly to the grants and not toward assessment.
Do you have an estimate for how many square feet you can get with $70,000? How many, how many, you know, how many property frontages? Is it one house, two house, 10 house?
Yeah, I would say it varies pretty widely. So it depends on if, if those repairs are like you can take care of by grinding versus like replacement. So I think our staff did sort of a kind of high level assessment of what the cost would be for the sidewalk repairs. And it varied anywhere from say like a thousand dollars up to $30,000, right?
What would the homeowner's responsibility be? In this program, in this pilot, what are we asking the homeowner to participate in? What's their stake in this?
So I, I think what we came up with a program was the city would participate up to, and I looked to Gina, like around $4,000 of city. Up to that amount in city participation and then the homeowner would be responsible for, for the remainder.
So if they get less than 4,000, it's free?
I know. I think it was, we were looking at a 50, 50% program up to 4,000.
Yeah, then the, the homeowner has a stake in this 50% of everything. So if it's only. A grinding project, horizontal cutting, then they, they still have stake in the game. But generally speaking, the, the really egregious stuff is not fixed by the grinding. It's fixed by replacement. Money goes quickly, which means we need more money in here and I love at the 50% level. Pivoting. There was a slide 90 about Measure U. And it showed where all the money for Measure U went. Thanks for pulling that one back around. On this one. Is, is 82 million the total accumulated revenue under the bond today or under the measure to date? Or does it include the bond value? And then if it does include the bond value. Does it include? You know, the, the debt over 30 years rather than the. You know where I'm going there? You got that as a question?
Yeah, so that's the total expenses directly paid out of the Measure U fund from inception to date. So it does not include the. The money's paid from the bond proceeds, but it does include the debt service on the bond. If that makes sense.
So the value of the bond is not included in the 82 here?
Not here because technically I pulled the numbers for Measure U and the bond proceeds are kept in a different fund.
Can I suggest that this is a little misleading on that front then? Leading me into my conversation about bond in general, I'm, I'm pretty uncomfortable about a, a bond. That pays for a thing you need every day. I, I'm a big fan of a bond for public safety where it's one-off and, and you, you bond up heavy. But if you need the same money every day. And you pay 30 million to get 20 million, I'd have to see the numbers before I was supportive of a bond for, you know, operating costs basically. Do we have cannabis revenue in our projections? What year?
Yes, we do have cannabis revenue in our sales tax projections.
For this year, 26?
For 26, correct.
What's our progress on permits?
So we coordinated on, on that. So we just, there's three. We're in close coordination with. We just issued. On one where we, and then we have a plan with. The second, so we're expecting the application to be submitted before the end of the month. And so we're still on track and then also in regular contact with the third license holder too.
Do, do they express date of opening, kind of optimism? When did they expect?
Before the end of the calendar year.
Before end of calendar year. So we can expect a growing six months of, great. Since I have you up, putting there, we did the general plan. Contract work, it's a capital project. And in last year's budget, do, will the zoning ordinance contract? That's separate, right? There's gonna be a new contract for, yeah. Will that be done as capital or where, where will that be in our budget? I think it dropped out of capital after this and.
So general fund. I, I believe it's in the general fund.
Are you talking about costs related to the general plan?
The zoning code. So this was. It's a separate, it was a separate ask as part of the budget, but which got approved. But I believe it's being proposed to come out of the general fund.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to be clear. I, I think we took that last CIP category off the books in this cycle. You know, there's still facility and all the rest, but the general plan went dropped out.
Can I get some clarification? Mary, you mentioned us bonding for roads that the council approved. So we could get to the roads sooner rather than later. And so what, what was your comment about not wanting to bond for things that we're using every day?
Well, I, I think we. We get $20 million. The theory was to accelerate and we, we pay $30 million and there's an arbitragey. Sweet spot in there about how, how bonds work. But if we can't get the money out quick enough, and I think I asked if there's still bond proceeds. And I think there's still bond proceeds unspent three and four years out. You know, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the occasion and it would have to be sold on it for the, any future similar bond.
Well, that, those bonds are gonna be paid over what period of time?
30 year, Evan.
Right. 30 years. So I guess my point is, is that we're trying to front load that and we expected it was gonna be three to four years, which is. What we, what we said when we took that bond out. We actually get up to four years to spend that. So. Yeah.
So there's four years, 4 million of the 20 is in this year's budget and 4 million of the 20 is in next year.
Approximately 4 million remains in the bonds available for projects that are programmed in 26.
4 million into 26? And then is there 4 million in 27?
There's future bonds for additional road work later on, but if we're talking about just the $20 million road bond that we already issued. 4 million is remaining and that is programmed in 26.
I read the questions rather quickly, the replies to questions rather quickly. I thought I saw 4 million in there twice.
And I would just offer too, we explored all of the options when we, before we issued the bonds in terms of. How to address the deferred backlog of road maintenance and it would have taken us. At least 10 years to accumulate $20 million. And in that 10 years, the cost of repairing the roads would have been significantly more. So. I think we did explore all the options and we, and we chose the option that was the most beneficial for the community.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Any, any other? Councilmember Quint?
Sure. Just a, a couple of quick ones. I wanted to come back real quick on the sidewalks. And, and you'll have to forgive my ignorance on this. I presume sidewalk repairs require a permit. Is that? Right?
Yes, they do. And I believe this program is going to take care of that.
Okay. Yes, sidewalk, if it's within the public right of way, which in most cases it would be, it would require an encroachment permit through the city. Through this program, we would look to waive the permit because for example, it could be a few hundred dollars for a permit. And you may have, you might have an example where it's a few hundred dollars worth of work, right? So it didn't make sense for us to. It, it's another barrier, right? To encourage. We would remove the, try to remove the barrier for, to encourage property owners to take care of their sidewalk by including that as part of the grant program.
Sure. So as a follow-up. The, so we, within the last year, we implemented an on-call program, right? For, I believe for like striping and maybe some like concrete work. Is that a true statement?
Correct.
So is there a way through this program to potentially leverage? An on-call provider or contractor to perform work for a resident at a saving. So if they. If they use an on-call city-approved contractor for this, that, because I presume the, the permit is really. There's, there's someone from the city that's gonna go out and make sure that it's done properly. But if we're, but if we can leverage a contractor that we trust, maybe there's an opportunity to. You know, to waive the, the fees. And I'm, I'm thinking about it. You've already answered a question with someone that's taking advantage of the program. But perhaps there's an opportunity to extend that to residents. but perhaps there's an opportunity to extend that to residents who are, maybe if the program funds run out, they could still use a city-approved on-call contractor and make it sort of just easier from a permitting process. Sorry, this may not be the right time to offer up that idea, but...
No, that makes sense. We can definitely explore all those options. There may be some economies of scale, too, as, you know, as contractors working in the area, you know, and resident can work with a contractor that's, you know, already working in the area and the city has worked with. So, yes, we definitely can explore that.
Yeah, for sure. Maybe, you know, just an avenue to make it easier for people to perform it. And again, that would get back to like communicating that, hey, we're, you know, getting something like that out to the community.
We've actually done that before. The last time that program was more active, the flat work that's involved lends itself to unit prices and on-call type contracts. So, we can look at that again as part of it. So, definitely, thanks.
Thank you. And then, lastly, I'll just say, I really appreciate the extra color around the economic activity. I think, you know, we, you know, Petaluma does a lot of great things, and I think we're on a pathway for taking that part of, you know, our city and, you know, to new heights. So, I appreciate that and look forward to, you know, continuing to see that flourish.
Councilmember Kater Thompson?
I just have a quick question on sidewalks. When you're talking about grinding, and so if a sidewalk just needs to be ground down to prevent trip and fall, who is responsible to get a grinder? I mean, does the city have one, or is it, are we expecting the property owner to find
No, the city doesn't own or have a grinder. If it's a property that, or if it's a sidewalk that's fronting a private property, it would be the property owner's responsibility. Having said that, the city also has sidewalks that are fronting city properties, like around parks. And so, we're going to be also going through and figuring out which sidewalks we are responsible for addressing. And through that process, we will likely be engaging with a contractor that specializes in grinding. So, I think as we do that and make those connections, we could also offer that up to, that reference to property owners, because it is a more cost-effective solution, if it's a good candidate for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I just want to comment that, you know, there was a project in downtown that was just going kind of wonky, and I just really want to thank Brian O., and I'm not going to say what project it was, for working with the person. And it's been a long haul, but they really appreciated working with you, and it was challenging. I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm just going to weigh in one more time on sidewalks, not to beat the smallest budget item into the ground. But, but I think with this $70,000 pilot, or 270, as we might get to, the, the city would probably be letting a contract for this, or adding it to their on-call program. And anyone in that field would have that capacity. And I'm hoping the project is that it's negotiated with the consumer, a consumer's told they have to, or resident's told they have to fix a sidewalk, and the city also says, "But if you sign off at 50%, we'll take care of everything." So, we don't waive the fee, we take care of everything. If we waive the fee, then I worry that every other person who gets a tag that doesn't participate in the program then says, "Why aren't you waiving the fee for me?" And that's a different discussion, not necessarily a bad discussion, but a different discussion. But I would assume that the city would run this, and no city sidewalk would be part of this pilot. City would take care of its own streets like it's owned. This is to encourage neighborhoods to be walkable again, rather than us to have a funding source for what we already were, you know, liable for. I love calling it a pilot, so that we get the idea that it may not, you know, we could be very strict the year after the pilot, or after a two-year pilot, where it's like, "Hey, you know, we tried to get you in on the early and fun." I digress. Vice Mayor?
And just to add to the sidewalks, some cities have, like the city of Lafayette had a sidewalk committee, and they actually came to the council and told them things that needed to be replaced in the city. And one of them is our downtown sidewalks. There are some really big tripping hazards, and we have put in some trees and grates, and this, the sidewalk has shifted. So, we need to take responsibility for those, along with the property owners who might not be at the property, they might live elsewhere. So, we have to think about those. And some of those older homes have what we call heritage trees, and those are getting, they're uprooting the sidewalk. And it's like, the tree was put in by Mrs. McNear over 100 years ago, and it's buckling the sidewalk. So, we have to take some responsibility for those sidewalks, so...
Good, thank you. Anyone? Anyone? Staff's had a wonderful evening, we've had a wonderful evening. And with that, we are adjourned tonight. Thank you.